Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lyle Oxiger, Chair of the Ames Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to make an exception motion to the agenda.
What would that be, sir?
I would like to remove the action items on the board's... action items for the board's policies and procedures until we have further discussion and consult with the attorneys.
We're here to discuss those items today.
I would make a motion for that.
Okay.
That we table the action items for the boards from the board...
Which would be what?
The three action items that are in front of the board regarding our policies and procedures and...
A through D?
It would be like A, B, C, item seven.
Yeah, there's three items. Until we have further discussion, I don't recollect having as much discussion as what the minutes... but I can't sign for our board retreat because I don't agree with them or I don't remember being stated and such. So, I'd just like to table it. We spend a little bit of time, make sure we're all on the same page.
So you need a second first before we deal with minutes?
I'm sorry. So I have a motion that we table these action items to a later date.
So you need a second first before we deal with minutes?
Well, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we remove items A through D from the agenda pending further discussion at some point in forward time. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
No, no. Lyle?
Go ahead, Gene.
Go ahead.
This is Gene. I feel like we heard a few comments at the strategic planning session, but that we really didn't hear any discussion items. So, that's why I feel that it might be best to have some further discussion and possibly put it back on the agenda next month.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Trustee O'Hara. I understand what you're saying. We're here to discuss those today. The discussion is to occur today. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor to remove these items for further discussion sometime in the future, date certain to be announced. And Mark made the motion and you seconded it, sir.
I would also like to add that I'd like to have the attorney give us some input regarding these decisions, which is well within reason.
Okay, we have an amendment to that, to have an attorney present to advise us on this and to discuss it. Do you want to amend your second to reflect that, Trustee O'Hara?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion and the amendment? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Let's have a roll call vote. Carrie?
Trustee Hou?
No. Em, yes, yes for the motion.
Clarification, yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Hara?
Yes. You talked about it on the amendment.
On the motion?
Yes, as I understand it, on the motion, yes.
Trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Wendell? Confirm no?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Chair Oxiger?
No. Okay, the motion and the amendment fails. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
I second the motion?
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion?
No.
Okay, we have a... we'll have a roll call vote.
Trustee Hou?
No.
Trustee O'Hara? Trustee Peterson? Trustee Wendell?
Yes.
Chair Oxiger?
Yes. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would so move again, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Wait, can we have a discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry. We can have discussion.
I can't sign the minutes for the 29th meeting.
Okay, let's break them out separately.
We have a motion and a second.
Would you be willing to withdraw your second?
Yes.
And would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Okay, let's do these individually. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 29th, 2020 District Board Retreat?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 29th, 2020 District Board Retreat. Any further discussion?
Again, I'm pretty much in agreement except for the action items that were prescribed in that protocol and items, what is it, four, I think through five.
Okay.
What are you saying?
Well, I, you know, it's just, it was calling for an action item to be later that month for the next business meeting, so I just don't agree with that.
I understand. Any other discussion?
So we have a question. What corrections do we need for the minutes?
Okay, any corrections, okay.
You just need a clarification of what items?
Revision of 1601, where suggestion will be voted on the upcoming board meeting. I don't remember any suggestion that these would be voted on in an upcoming board meeting, nor do I remember receiving any further comments or copies or dialogue of all of this prior to us receiving our board packet last Wednesday. And that's pretty much anything that was doing, dealing with these three action items. I don't remember specifically having them being addressed at the next board meeting. You know, usually we always have discussion before we have an action item. We might even have two months of discussion for that. It did not occur. If it occurred at that board meeting, I don't remember it being as verbose as these statements are in the action items and as detailed. And I guess we will discuss those because they're on the agenda. So, there won't be an attorney present. I feel amiss that we don't have our board's attorney to answer some of the questions that are in front of us. So, that's why I can't sign that this... unless you want to remove some of that or make some exceptions or we do it at next month's meeting, possibly we can find agreement on that.
Certainly, Trustee Hou. If you may recall, the board retreat on January 29th, and it was late in the day towards the end of the session, we did have our consultant, Pam Fisher, available and Stowe Whitwer, legal counsel.
Do I remember the meeting?
And they were there discussing changes to those said policies and procedures which were reviewed and discussed with the changes noted in the action items to come to the board for action at a later board meeting.
Typically, when we have these type of revisions, we get a copy of those revisions at a work session, we come back, look at them again, yeah, they're good to go, let's approve them. We just are missing one step, that's all I'm saying. And just, it's okay, possibly most of it's okay, but I'd like to keep it simple and say, let's due process on this. Because I have questions, I'm going to ask questions if we have to proceed, surgery's fine. But I don't have the attorney here, so I'm kind of concerned that we're making a decision based on...
Right, so, okay, so I'm going to try to separate some of this out just a little bit while we're in discussion, if I may.
You may.
So, you're not disputing that we had the conversation in our retreat and that Carrie reflected that conversation, that revisions to these procedures would be made at an upcoming board meeting? But what you would like is an additional step in a work session for additional conversation, is that correct?
Yes.
So then, are you comfortable with approving the minutes? Because the minutes are saying that we had this conversation, it would be voted on in an upcoming board meeting. But then when we get down to action items, then at that point, you may want to say, please, let's have further conversation with this with an attorney present so that we can have further discussion.
I don't recollect that statement, I'm sorry.
Okay, and unfortunately, we didn't tape it, the retreat. We tape board meetings.
I just don't recollect. I wish I could say that, but for convenience.
The reason that we're having a hard time here is we've got to figure out what to do with the minutes because we have...
Exactly.
Someone who created the minutes based on notes taken, but we didn't tape it. So we can't go back to prove it. So, we're...
We need to figure this out a little bit.
Can we table that until next month?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. I mean, the minutes.
Well, you don't mind the minutes, you don't.
The minutes would need to be approved as is upon a vote of the board by majority or approved with a correction stated and then approved by a vote of the majority.
Well, and I remember the discussion myself, so it was a short discussion, it wasn't in-depth, it was anticipated that today we would discuss those in-depth, which is actually on the agenda, to discuss those in-depth. So, I can't agree to correcting the minutes because I recall the discussion. So, what we'll have to do is make a motion and approve or disapprove.
I would just add that, as I said earlier, I remember the topic coming up, that, you know, some changes were going to be proposed, but I didn't, I don't recall any discussion of the matter, what are the deficiencies that we're trying to address, what are the problems that we're addressing with these changes? And I just thought it would be helpful to have legal counsel there to explain that.
Okay, and I understand that, Trustee O'Hara and Trustee Hou. I've heard a couple of people here say they do recall that. Trustee Hou does not recall that, so I think what we have to do is vote on the minutes based on your recollection and your willingness to approve these minutes. We understand that you want to discuss this more in-depth and when we get to those items, well, we've already...
When we get to the actions, not the actions.
I don't even remember what we've done.
We approved the agenda, so when we get to the action items, that's when you will have, can have another conversation to talk about...
Individual aspects.
Individual.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with what you've said. I do remember the conversation, wasn't much, I would agree with that, and it was late in the day. But it seems to me that we can still approve these, the minutes, which is what our conversation is now.
Yep.
And then that allows opportunity then to discuss the issues specifically when we get to the action items.
I agree. Okay, so, the bottom line is, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second to approve the minutes of the January 29th, 2020 District Board Retreat. And I would ask the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Nay.
Okay, we have one abstention and one nay.
Nay.
Yep, we got it, Gene, thanks.
Two nays.
Chair Oxiger? May I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Yes, she may.
Trustee Hou? Trustee O'Hara? Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Wendell?
Aye.
Chair Oxiger?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, those minutes are approved. Now, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2020 District Board Meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We have a second. Trustee Hou. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, not hearing none, all in favor signify. Do you want to do a roll call vote on this one, Carrie? Please, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Hou?
Yes.
Trustee O'Hara? Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Wendell?
Yes.
Chair Oxiger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. We do have someone who would like to speak to us today.
Yes, we do have one, and you have his name in front of you there, it's Mr. Perry Bell.
Welcome, Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell would like to talk to us, I think, about the Young Professionals Organization.
Yes, I would.
All right, welcome.
Well, thank you all and commend you all for the fine work you do for Ames. And as a community leader, I applaud all the things that Ames does for all the local communities. And I'm the president of the Southeast World Chamber, which kind of covers all of Southeast World Chamber of Commerce. We are developing a Young Professionals Organization, and I'm sure that Ames will be part, and I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on where we're headed with that. But our mission statement for that is most likely going to be to attract, develop, and retain emerging professionals in Southeast World County through engagement with local companies, education, and the community. So Ames would be a key part of that. But what our chamber is willing to offer a young professionals group if we, once we get this up to speed, is we can offer professional business and leadership opportunities for them from out all the business in Southeast World Chamber. We can offer them a mentoring program where we can take senior leaders and match them with the students and/or professionals in whatever area they're going. We also have lunch and learns every month at which they would be a definite and integral part of. We could do, we are willing to run interview classes, and I don't mean classes on how to take an interview and how to give an interview, sessions on career development, sessions on personal finance, and then other civic engagements that they can have inside the community. So, just to make you aware that that is where we're headed with this Young Professionals Program, and we will be working hard with Ames. And I applaud Julie Lukenga up here for working with us and giving them the opportunity to do that. So thank you very much.
Super. Well, thank you very much for your comments and thank you for being here. And that concludes the public comments. Thank you, Timothy. Item six, presentations from guests and representatives to the board. Excellence at Ames is first up. Shannon McCaslin.
Here we are again. Good afternoon, board. Today, I have the privilege of introducing you to yet another remarkable student, Ms. Rosalena Cardenas, a proud graduate of Fort Lepton High School. In May of 2018, Rosalena followed in her family's footsteps when she came to this campus in the fall of 2018. Time flies, doesn't it? She's been a proud participant in the Bueno Camp program. She's also in the Trio program, and I think she's got some cheerleaders back here, including her mama, who's here as well. In fact, she has grown into various leadership roles while a student here. You can see some of those up on the screen, including her current role in the Campus Activities Board, in which she's been planning some fabulous student events. I know Trustee Wendell was just at one, not too long ago, and building community with her classmates. But I'll stop there because I don't want to steal her thunder, and I want us to hear from the remarkable Ms. Rosalena.
Hi, good afternoon. At first, I had no idea how I was going to introduce myself. Shannon, when we first met, she asked me, do you want me to ask you questions or do you want to do this yourself? Well, once I started writing down my ideas, I thought to myself, dang, I should have just told her to ask me questions. But once I truly started thinking about how great opportunity this is, I thought to myself, I'm going to break out of my shell, this is it. After taking my first public speaking class, my instructor told me, everyone feels the same way, anxious and nervous. Well, it's time for me to introduce myself. Hi, my name is Rosalena Cardenas, I am 19 years old. I was raised right here in Fort Lepton, Colorado. I've been living in Fort Lepton since I was four years old. I attended kindergarten through 12th grade here. I went to Fort Lepton Middle School and High School, and both of them gave me great opportunities, especially the fact that I wanted to reach higher education. My supporting staff at Fort Lepton High School always encouraged me to reach higher and smarter no matter what. I am a Mexican-American, first-generation student. Both my brother and my sister attended Ames Community College right here. When coming here, I knew immediately in high school that I was going to come to Ames no matter what, and I also knew that I wanted to apply to Bueno Camp. This program taught me so much, taught me to focus on myself, move forward, good studying habits, and good listening skills. And I wanted to share with you one of the most important goals that I made, and that is to travel. My first major trip was for my brother's wedding. He got married on a cruise ship. We went to Havana, Cuba. This was a great experience, and after this, I knew I wanted to keep traveling. So I looked for the most cheapest trip I could possibly do, and to my surprise, I found that I can go to China for 12 days for less than $1,000. Immediately, I said I was going to do it. I was really skeptical because it was $1,000, but I paid for it anyways. I never pictured myself walking on the Great Wall of China, and it was the greatest experience ever. Being able to attend Ames Community College was the greatest and smartest academic choice I have ever done. Not only is it affordable, but it gives great opportunities, especially for students that want to make an impact in their community. I'm currently the LULAC Vice President these last two years, and I've loved it. It's definitely been the greatest opportunity. We do stuff like community service, fundraising, and we also do team bonding events. Community service that we've done is feeding the homeless at the Denver Rescue Mission, trash pickup here in Fort Lepton, and so much other stuff. We've also raised money for a scholarship. Last year, we raised money for a scholarship for a student that was financially needed but was not eligible for financial aid. We are currently looking for more fundraising opportunities for us to go to the LULAC Conference that's happening in Washington, DC. Being the Campus Activity Programmer is the greatest job I could have ever asked for. It's great to be able to connect to my small Fort Lepton community and being able to put a smile on the students' faces that I went to high school with. I can't wait to work alongside other great programmers here at Fort Lepton. It's a great opportunity. I love educating people and helping them. This is why I wanted to become a dental hygienist. I always knew I wanted to work in a dental office, but after shadowing one, I realized I did not want to become a dentist. I was not ready to be in school for another eight more years. I love, I love how independent dental hygienists are. They're always willing to help, and they don't need anyone to help them, as long as they do it all by themselves. I've always been really passionate about my future job, making sure I'm always ahead of myself, what classes I'm going to take, to when I'm going to graduate. And it's a great opportunity to have great advisors like I do here at Ames Community College. They're always telling me to do smart things like what classes I'm going to take and making sure I'm taking the right classes, especially my instructors. They're always wanting to help me with tutoring, like my chemistry professor always taking time off of herself to help me and making sure I'm passing my chemistry exams. I love how much of a role model I have became for my nephew and my niece. When I asked my eight-year-old nephew what he wanted to do when he grew up, he didn't tell me what he wanted to do when he grew up, but what he did tell me is that he wanted to attend Ames Community College, and I love that. I'm so proud to be an Ames Community College member. This is such a great opportunity. Thank you so much.
Did you get an A in public speaking, Rosalena? You better, okay, well, we're gonna... She gets an A, doesn't she? She gets an A.
So, Rosalena, we wanted to thank you for taking the time today. It's very important for all of us here to keep in mind and keep focused on why we do what we do every day. And so, to hear your story and to hear how you're inspiring others inspires us. So thank you so very much, and just a small token of our gratitude for being here today.
Well, Rosalena, I think you are out of your shell. I think you arrived. So, we're extremely proud of you, and we certainly appreciate your comments. This is definitely, and most always, the highlight of this meeting is hearing from our past students and their accomplishments. I think we're all pretty disappointed that you didn't invite us to go to China with you. Any other...
Well, I would just say, if you were nervous, man, you sure didn't show it. And in fact, if nervous makes you speak as well as you did, whenever I'm asked to speak, then I'm going to get nervous.
My legs were a little shaky, but it's okay.
Rosalena, I'd like to say, I think I've known you since you were 14, and you've always had the perseverance. You've told me you wanted to be a dental hygienist since about you were 15. So, keep going, you're doing a great job, and I'm really happy you're here at Ames. Thank you.
I might add that, you know, you have aimed and you are aimed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, representatives to the board, Student Government Association, Chris.
All righty. Good afternoon to the board, Chair Oxiger, and President Bornstein, and other friends behind me in attendance today. Crazy, we're already halfway through the semester. We're almost done with this. It's flying by fast. SGA and all of our student leaders have been working hard over the past month, and so we've got plenty of updates for you today. Before jumping into the report, I know that at the last meeting, I can't remember which board member had requested information from Nelson Rodriguez, our executive director of the sale office, about the Student Bus Pass program and an update on that. So, considering that the program was set up by the student government president of a couple of years ago, he passed the information on to me to deliver today. So, I do have a ton of data here, but I'll just go over last semester's data. So in the fall of 2019, there was a total of 129 students that utilized our $1 Bus Pass program, and that, they totaled a total of 3,900 rides for the semester. So, I was not aware of this program and was absolutely astonished at how well it's impacting our students. So, very awesome resource that we have. But now going onto the report, just a couple of quick student organization updates. In January, our agricultural club walked in the National Western Stock Show Parade, and also our Warriors to Scholars Student Veteran Association attended our RD's orientations and welcomed new students to Ames, so we're really happy to see them there as well. Moving on to a quick couple of student events, we've got an event called Celebrate Your Name, and it's coming up this week. It's an opportunity for students to stop by... It's an opportunity for students to stop by and figure out the origin and meaning of their names. This event is being spearheaded by Abby, one of our programmers in Greeley, and it'll be on the Greeley campus. Another event coming up at the end of this month is the Do-It-Yourself Piñatas Event. It's being held here on the Fort Leptin campus, and students are invited to come and build their own piñatas. Rosalina is spearheading that as well, so cool that we got to hear from her too today. So, that is going to be at the end of the month. If you want to pitch a tent, hang out till the 25th of March. I don't think Julie can kick the board members out if they did that, but anyhow, moving on. As always, the specific times and dates and locations for those events are in your board packets. Onto some quick SGA business. With February wrapping up, we did the pitching of that new mandatory online training through the Title IX Office, and we offered some incentives to, for students to take it early, since it does affect them signing up for classes in March. When we picked the random students on February 21st for our drawings, a total of over 1,100 students had already taken the training. So, it's very awesome to see our students engaging and taking that training early. Yeah, let's see. Oh, yes, in February, we had our first student gathering of the semester. It was focused on recycling, landscaping, and promoting of positions with the Ames landscaping team. We had around, in and around 40 students who showed up and participated in repurposing plastic bottles and turning them into bird feeders. So, now they are hanging in trees in between the Ed Beatty and College Center buildings. So, that was a fun time back at the beginning of February. Also, SGA this semester, I wanted to update this as well. I don't think I've mentioned it in a couple of months, but we are still part of the Colorado Student Government Coalition, which is a newly formed group that was formed back in the fall. We meet monthly, and almost 20 different higher ed institutions are represented at this meeting, all student government leaders from around the states. We usually move around to different colleges. But we're pooling our resources for best practices, as well as advocating for students on the state level and seeing what we can use or help out in that way as well. So, Ames is there and is active in it, and hopefully will continue to be active in it for years to come. Just finishing up, I wanted to announce that our next student government gathering is going to be held on March 30th in the College Center lolly. We're calling it the Social Social, since we'll be focusing on Ames' different social media platforms and encouraging students to engage through online and digitally. And that is it for me for this month. Does the board have any questions for me?
Great, great report. Any questions of Chris?
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
I don't have any questions, but do you want to mention what you've agreed to do on May 8?
May 8? Oh, yes.
Are you graduating on May 8?
So, I'm going to be... On May 8th is graduation, yeah, kind of a big deal. Dr. B. had invited me to emcee commencement and graduation, so I will be doing that on the 8th as well. So, looking forward to that, yeah. All righty. All good. Anything else from the board?
We'll look forward to seeing you, sure.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ames Faculty Association, Brooke.
Good afternoon, board members, Chairman Oxiger, Dr. B., Carrie Schaefer Randolph. I am here on behalf of AFA, and we're just going to kind of give you some updates about what faculty has been doing. Actually, faculty is probably all on D2L right now, trying to figure out if we are going to be teaching online. So, we're all very busy this week. So, we'll move forward with this, performances, presentations, exhibits. Professor and Chair of English, Evan Oakley, gave a reading earlier at the Red Shaw called "A Poetic Response to the Vote" exhibit at the Loveland Museum on February 13th. On April 3rd, Evan Oakley will give a poetry reading at 7:00 PM at the Loveland Public Library. And on April 4th, he will be giving a workshop there as well. So, I have the date and time in your packet here. Instructor of Art, Stephanie Burshett, has an exhibit in the Ed Beatty Art Gallery right now entitled "Namesake." It is, we'll say, a powerful exhibit. It is showing lynch mobs from many years ago and comparing them to lynch mobs of today by using facial recognition software. And actually, yes, it's really, really interesting. If you could go in there and check it out, it's really interesting. She was talking about how oftentimes people can hide behind the camera and participate in racial issues and things and think that they're hiding behind the camera. So, what she had said, it's her response to the ongoing American crisis of racial inequality and violence. It is about looking at the characters who are performing in front of the camera without consequence. It is about using photography and video to evoke fear. Very powerful exhibit, if you choose to check that out in Ed Beatty. Then, we have Professors of Humanities, Shell Costello, Joshua Savage, and Leslie Morrison, organized a student trip. They went to the Denver Art Museum. They checked out the Monet exhibits. They checked out the Art and Light Exhibition there as well. The professors also then went with their students through the exhibits and talked to them about how to write about art and how to kind of put into words all of the things that they had seen that day. So, we had them facilitating in the study of the art, and it was in large part made possible by donations from SGA. That was the way that they were able to go to the art museum. Then, I have Professor and Chair of Graphic Design and Rich Media, Brian Dunning, with Instructor of Art, Dan Augustin. They have some works in the Mitchner Library on UNC Campus right now. This juried show is called "Art from the Heart." It runs from February 24 through March 27. In addition, there are several Ames students that have artwork in the same show right now. I just heard also that Brian Dunning and Dan Augustin both have won awards for their artwork in there, again, I think first and second place. So, in addition to that, Brian Dunning also, over our last break, went to, I think it was North Carolina, yes, North Carolina, the John C. Campbell Folk School, and took a blacksmithing class and ended up getting a certificate in that as well. So, then he brought all of his little toys that he made, and we all got to look at all of his tools and things that he made over break. So, he's going to be showing some of that in his classes. Let's see, what else? Professor of English, Literature, and Humanities, Leslie Morrison, presented a paper recently, "Slavery and Authority in Eliza Haywood's Memoirs of an Unfortunate Young Nobleman," at the Western Society for 18th Century Studies. Again, we have more professional development and training. Professor of Automotive Service Training, Mark Broth, traveled to Charleston, South Carolina, for 64 hours of Volvo training. That is instructor training. It's part of the Volvo University. Community involvement, we had Professor of Political Science, Kay Trent Howell, was elected Chair of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee with a goal of reviewing budget proposals that are developed by the city of Greeley. What he intends on doing, then, is taking some of those real-life examples and using them in his American government classes and hoping that using local ideas and things with his students will help them to understand the process better. He will have the process from, I guess, backstage, right? Musician, out there again, backstage. No, that's not what I should probably say there. But he'll have that, you know, that he can bring that to them, and they're going to use it in their government classes. Let's see, some awards. We have Professor and Chair of RTV, Jim Crandall. He has a student sports talk radio program, the EMP Show. It just took second and third places in the BEA Festival of Media Arts for two-year school's use of non-narrative audio. And the last thing I have on here is our Ames Faculty Association has decided that we would like to find a way to recognize a staff member every year. We know that we could not do the job that we do with students if we did not have our staff associates helping us. So, we are going to start a new Faculty-Chosen Staff of the Year Award, which will honor full or part-time staff who support faculty and students, provide service beyond their job duties, embody the Ames value of community by cultivating a feeling of fellowship with faculty, students, and other staff, and embody the Ames value of professional respect. Nominations are being collected now. We will all vote on it, and then we will present the winner in the spring. That is all I have for you from faculty today. Do you have any questions?
No questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, next is Ames Staff Association, Jen.
Good afternoon. A little warm from being outside. It's so nice. So, this is maybe one of my favorite reports to give, because it's about February. And the ASA Leadership Group, we brought back our RD grams for Valentine's Day this year. So, we had approximately 350 sent across all campuses to staff, members, and faculty, just showing a little love and appreciation for everyone. And I think it was very well received. I'd like to give a shout out to our esteemed postman slash cupid, Mike Harrison, who always helps us coordinate these efforts. And I know that it's a little bit past, but we wanted to make sure to share the love with our Board of Trustees members as well. So, I have some. We just want to give you a little love and say thank you so much for all that you do for us. And even though it does take quite the coordinated effort, we really enjoyed this event and just feel that it's great to let our coworkers know how much we appreciate everyone. So, thank you so much. And we have a staff accomplishment. Mary Ann Lucero, who is the Director for the Center for Diversity and Inclusion. She has been accepted to Colorado State University and will begin working toward her PhD in Higher Education Leadership, beginning this summer, 2020. And she will be advised by Dr. Susanna Munoz, a scholar whose work has been fundamental to how institutions respond to and support immigrant students in higher education. So, look forward to hearing about her work. And finally, I just would like to end with some ripples. I know they're in your board packet, but I always like to read them. First, I would like to read Dan Thompson. He's a trade specialist in facilities. He was nominated by Kendra Marriott, Program Coordinator in Allied Health. Dan has just completed painting the offices in AHS 202 and other offices on the second floor of Allied Health, and I have never seen a more proficient and professional guy. He was always super happy and accommodating. He is a role model of what all Ames employees should strive to be. Thanks, Dan. My office looks amazing. Second is Scott Sherman, Security Guard for Fort Leptin, nominated by Miranda Holton, a student. Scott is a good man who's always here to help people. He is always kind and making friends. He is always there for the staff and students for whatever they need and is always in good spirits. He is always friendly, and he can always turn my mood around. He is a good support person to have around and is willing to listen to anything you have to say. He works very hard to make our school a better place. And finally, John Gray and Michelle Wareheim, IT Support Specialists, nominated by Gina Jones, a professor. I operate Tax Help Colorado. With the rollout of the Paper Cut program, some issues arose while attempting to print tax returns on the Loveland and Fort Leptin campuses. I was able to contact the help desk, and John and Michelle worked diligently to discover the issue and correct it. I appreciate their working tirelessly to rectify issues when panicked faculty call. This particular issue affected not only faculty and student printing, but it also had an impact on the community. Their professional attitude was recognized and truly appreciated. And that's all I have for you today. Any questions?
Thank you, Jen. Any questions of Jen?
Thank you.
Great report. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move on to item seven, action items. Couple of comments before we get into the action. First of all, Jean, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, thank you, sir. We just recently finished a board retreat. I think it's important to note that all of the action items here are very important to discuss openly in front of you all here. This is your institution, and you are all entitled to hear the discussions on these, especially policies, I believe. One of the things that was emphasized at our recent board retreat was board discussions around policies and things like that. And the standard that we're held to is to discuss these things here so that everybody gets the information, and there's no information put out there between parties that everyone isn't privy to. So, things like people going off and meeting separately and talking about these in advance or making phone calls and things like that, which creates kind of a series meeting. Those things are very inappropriate and should not be allowed. So, that's why we put these on the agenda like this, and that's why we're going to have these open discussions. So, I just wanted to emphasize that and know that we respect your right to hear all of this. Because we have a trustee that is vacationing on a golf course in Arizona, sir, Jean has asked to be here.
Yes, I can chat. I can chat.
Jean has asked to be here via phone, so we will be having our discussions, and then we will be taking roll call votes on these action items. So, first action item up, Board of Trustees, Policy 12, Board Officer Elections and Responsibilities Revision. This is an item that has come up. We briefly mentioned it at the board retreat. And so, it's here today. And basically, the revision is that, and I'm going to be probably referencing Dr. B. on some of this stuff, is number one on this, including a statement saying that the board president and the college CEO slash president have authority to access legal counsel. And if I remember that in context, it's around a potential lawsuit or anything like that happening to or involving the institution and having the board president and/or... The board president and/or the college president having to testify and possibly needing legal counsel. And Dr. B., you can correct me if I'm wrong on that or not inclusive or...
No, the conversation at the retreat with Stowe there was really to try to clarify that next sentence in the policy right there that says, the board, the next sentence, the sentence in black after the red line. "The board president shall appear on behalf of the local college district in all suits brought by or against the district, but if the board president is individually interested, the duty shall be performed by the board secretary." So, at retreat, we were, again, in formal conversations. The request was made to clarify who had, of the board members, had access to legal counsel on behalf of the institution. So, that was the intent of that line. Being added, which states, "The board president and the college CEO president have the authority to access legal counsel."
Okay, do we not have that authority now?
In practice, that is what has been happening at Ames for many, many years. Is that the board chair and the college president/CEO have access to legal counsel? In practice, it just, it wasn't in writing.
It wasn't in policy. So, the point of this is to put it in policy.
That's kind of what we were talking about.
In practice, my understanding is we've always been able to meet with counsel, even as other board members...
As an entire board, absolutely. The board can always ask...
Or two at a time.
Yeah, it's typically gone, it's typically gone through the board chair, whoever the board chair has been. But the board as a whole, absolutely, when we talk about various subject matters, can always ask for legal advice, coming to work sessions to talk through something, particularly executive sessions. We have an executive session option specifically for legal advice if we're talking about certain things. So, absolutely, the board as a whole can always ask for legal advice.
Yeah, yeah. And I would agree with that. So, go ahead, Jean.
Can I ask a question? Dr. B., you come in that, you know, any contact of legal counsel on behalf of the institution, so I interpret that, on behalf of the college, is that separate from on behalf of the Board of Trustees? And I guess in my mind, I've understood that, you know, yes, there's the institution. You operate the institution. There's a board. We are elected by the community, and we have a responsibility to represent that community. And there may be, you know, different perspectives when you're thinking about board discussion, board issues versus institutional issues. Are they all the same?
Well, you know, there's a, that's a lo, there's a long answer to that question. So, it's, sometimes it's not as clear...
Dr. B, I, Dr. B, could you speak closer to the, the microphone? It's just, I, I just hear, have an echo, and I can't really understand what you're saying.
Okay, if I speak here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, that's very good.
Can you hear me if I speak here? Okay. So, there's a very, there's a lot of response to that question, and it's not always as clear cut as what is a board issue with a legal counsel that supports the board and a college issue of legal counsel. Sometimes it is. And just so all of you are aware, the college accesses many different legal firms for different reasons at different times. So, not only do we reach out to Stowe and, and his firm, we also reach out to a separate local firm that is focused on employee relations, another firm that's focused on student affairs issues and Title IX issues, another firm locally that focuses on contracts and general counsel. So, legal issues, as we all know, have become so specialized that it, that right now, the college has chosen, instead of having one firm, to really reach out to several that can really help us with our specialized issues. Now, having said that, that also includes when the CEO president works with the board and the board chair. Often, there are many times in conversations that questions come up that Carrie and I, we call Stowe or we call another attorney and say, hey, the board had this question, or the board asked us to do this research, we need, we need a legal opinion, or we need some advice, what do you think? And then we bring that in, from the college perspective. From the board perspective, go ahead.
Okay, or go ahead. And I, I totally understand, you know, a college, or in my experience, a hospital has many different issues, requires the different kinds of legal expertise. That, that's very clear in my mind. It was just the question of whether or not there are board questions that just deal with board activities and structure, dealing with, you know, the state regs under which we function, or policies, and regs and policies, laws, all are subject to some interpretation. And it, it seems like, you know, legal counsel access as a board member allows us to better represent our constituencies. And it, it seemed to me, and maybe I'm misinterpreting the change in the policy here, but it seemed like, as an individual board member, I really didn't have access to legal advice. And I recognize you can't have everybody calling up legal counsel, but it just seemed that it was somewhat restricting our ability to represent our constituency.
So, I, I do... So, I understand your comment, and so maybe a suggestion might be to edit this language, is that the, the board as a whole has access to legal counsel through the board chair and/or the college CEO president. Because typically, as you just said, if, if a member has a question, or as Mark had men, trustee Howden mentioned earlier, if, you know, there's a couple folks that want to meet, meet with the board chair and legal counsel, or there's a question with regard to research or advice that we need, we can go through the president and/or the board liaison to kind of get that information. So, maybe it's a matter of editing this statement here, so that those requests are funneled through those two channels. Is that, was I interpreting your comment correctly?
Yes, although, you know, it, it seems confusing if the board issues go through or need to be reviewed and approved by the college CEO president. And there aren't any issues now, but I can see down the road, and thinking of some in the past, that would have been complicated and probably were by those going through the, the individual, individual that we as board members are supposed to oversee.
Understood, yes. And in that case, you'd go through the board chair, you wouldn't go through president. So, if we have the language in there that says "and/or," because you also don't want whoever's board chair for general legal requests, the board chair would end up probably calling Carrie and I anyway and saying, you know, can you, can you look this up, or can you talk to legal counsel for these issues or do this research? So, I think you'd want options, I would imagine.
I, I might suggest one thing that I have, and, go ahead, Jean, while you got your thought.
No, go ahead, Mark.
Well, one of the thoughts that I had, you know, with this, because, you know, when Lyle and I have discussed, you know, coming up these, these next two years, you know, he's very concerned that we have a "we" in the project, that it's all of us, all five of us on the same team, or we are that team. We, we represent our constituents, we, we want to give you all of our blessings and all of our, you know, some of our criticism from time to time, but don't worry about it. But the long and short, what I saw with this that was lacking possibly, or maybe needs addending, this is why I kind of wanted to spend more time with it, and not necessarily just rubber stamp it, is, you know, when we have legal counsel, you know, there's a couple of questions. One was Jean brought up, is the board's legal counsel, since I've been on the board, my understanding has been Stowe. And that's, he's, he's the board's attorney. The college has a variety of attorneys, you know, and when it comes to aspects of interaction between the board and the college, then we need to engage Stowe and maybe the college attorneys, and they all come up with a solution, and we're all happy. When we talk to our attorney, I'm talking Stowe, I feel comfortable if we have conversations that, you know, don't necessarily, if, you know, rather than dragging all of us board members down to Stowe's office or having him come out to the college, it's a lot easier to form a small committee, whether it's the president and the treasurer, president and the secretary, or it's president and another board member, especially if there's some conflicts or some ethical issues, because one of these action items is an ethical code of ethics violations or concerns that we have. How do we address those in a, in a fair and equal part? So, you know, defining the board's counsel as one person, that's the entity that has the history, and Dr. B and I talked about this on Mondays, sometimes she just needs some background, some depth, and so she needs to make a phone call, and it's about this, this is the way it's been. I mean, for 15 years, we operated with about this much policy and procedure for a board, all in. And it's a lot different now. Of course, the rules are different today. I mean, we have all Title IX issues. I've learned so much about, don't say that, you know, it's, you know, just have to be more careful, and we have to, want to do the right thing all the time. So, you know, those are the questions I have regarding this one. I, I feel comfortable addending it. Dr. B needs to talk to our board attorney from time to time. It needs to have Lyle there. It needs to have, unless it's a benign question about, can you give me some history, you know? But if it's a board interaction, then I think three parties need to be involved with that at least, two from the board and one, Dr. B. That's, that's, that's a balance then. There's a triad there, and we live, and everybody can listen. Or we call a board meeting, we bring Stowe in, all five of us listen, which would be the same. And then just for, you know, for practical concern, and when the board becomes an illegal issue, or something that really needs to be addressed or at least be made aware of, I know we've had employment issues that we've gotten phone calls from time to time to say, oh, by the way, this might come up for some odd reason in this policy procedure, tag you're in on this one. And we would have to vote on it, and it would be kind of a, a new thing. We need to become aware of it. Dr. B's been very good about that, you know, as far as informing us of our, oh, boy, you're, you're in a, not in kimchi, but you're, you have to be aware of it. I just would like to keep the whole board aware of any legal board policy issues all at once. That's my feelings. That puts the "we" back in Lyle's pocket. He's got four "we's" in his pockets, that's all of us, and, you know, that's the way, the way I look at it, it's, we're a "we" board. And this discussion is good, it's going to happen, and so I'm good. As long as we can addend it to have some, because I'm even mentioning that if the president isn't available, then I'm there. Well, second fiddle, something happens, Lyle has to be out of town, and all of a sudden, should I be made aware of it? Or should, if I, if there's a conflict with me, does it go to the treasurer, or to Ray, former passport chair? You know, just something in that context that has a catch, catch-all. So, it's just not two people. It's my thoughts. Hang with me a minute here.
Good thoughts.
If anybody could follow that, I don't know. Hopefully, I, I made it where. That's, those are the three "ings." If we have legal counsel, it's the colleges, it's the board's counsel, he's not the college's counsel.
How about something like the board, the board chair, or his or her representative, and the college CEO or president have the authority to access legal counsel?
And I, I think along with the president, any board member can act, ask for legal counsel, you know?
The board?
Any board member, you know?
Through the chair.
Through the chair, yes. And that's all, the only way I've ever accessed legal counsel is, one time, Ray and I sat down in, early in October, or December, Lyle and I sat down. And, you know, we, we, they were productive, they were very productive. I learned a lot.
So, how about the board? Any member of the board through the chair, the board chair or his or her representative and the college CEO president?
Something in that context, can we write it out?
That's a long statement.
We'll, we'll need to wordsmith it and come back and...
But we can wordsmith.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, it's just, let's...
Would that, is that inclusive enough?
Yeah, I think we just need to have, and let's look at it, and then, yeah, I think we're good. I'm not trying to pick things apart, I'm just saying, whenever you have policy procedures, you got so many what-ifs, that you could still, you could go on to infinity, what if this, what if that, what, you know, what's reasonable? I guess that's the thing.
Are you happy with that?
Well, so far...
Did you follow that?
No. Just the comment that I would make is that it, the way that is stated now, it would seem to me it would take both the board president and the CEO to, you got to have an "or" in there, which then allows the board to act on its own.
Okay.
If it chooses to...
You certainly know that.
It's a sort of a wordsmithing kind of thing, but...
Right.
I think it is fairly significant, and given what we've been talking about.
So, do we have consensus that that's where we want to go?
I think so, I think Mark's trying to...
I, I have an additional question.
Okay.
And it has to do with, the board chair should have all rights, and the other board members, you know, and to go to legal counsel that represents the board's perspective versus a legal counsel that's serving both, both groups. Just thinking of my experience as a CEO, in, in reading that, it sounds to me like the CEO can stop or, at, at a minimum, delay significantly, board access to a legal counsel if there's some disagreement between the CEO and board. Since we are expected to oversee the CEO, and the CEO runs the institution, so why could there be a step for you to go through? You have to go through the CEO, or, you know, I can see where, yes, CEO should be there if there's some conflict there.
Well, just a thought on that, Jean.
But not be able to, to restrict that access.
Just a thought on that, Jean. Would you not rather just leave it open? If you start defining what they can go see an attorney for, then where do you stop defining where, what they can go to an attorney for? Right now, the way I see it, it's pretty open. It doesn't really say that you have what reasons you have to have to go consult an attorney. It's pretty much left open to you, so we could, we could address a board issue, or we could address an institutional issue.
Well, it, it sounds to me that Ray's suggestion of putting "and slash or..."
That's right.
Covers almost all of that. The questions that Jean is...
So, did you hear trustee Wendell?
No, I could not hear that.
Oh, okay. You want to repeat it, or you want me to?
Jean, the suggestion from Ray suggesting that we need to do "and/or," so the board president and/or the college CEO president has authority to access legal counsel, means that they can go separately or together. And so, we still retain our independence as a board.
Did you hear that, Jean?
So, so what you're saying is that in some cases, we, we would not go through the board chair, the "or" would mean, then we would go through the CEO president to go to legal counsel related to board issues?
Jean, I think you're, are you, I'm wondering if everyone's thinking that the board chair would go legal counsel without going with the entire board's...
No, no, not the entire board. But the board chair and another board member, and if they think it's appropriate, then to include the CEO president.
That's correct.
If we're supposed to oversee things, we should have, you know, a clear access to legal counsel, so that we can do our, our research and so forth on what's legal, what's appropriate.
The "and/or" does that.
The "and/or" does that.
So, Jean, the "and/or" does that because it gives, it gives, it gives the board all possibilities. So, if you have a little tiny question, the little tiny question can just come through the CEO president for legal advice. If you have a more complicated, sensitive, private question, it can go through the chair to legal advice and not include the CEO president at all. So, if we have the "and/or" in there, it allows you to do all of that.
The only, I, I agree with the "and/or," but the caveat that when we go see legal counsel, you know, and it's just like our retreat, you know, three out of five heard one thing and two out of five didn't hear that, you know? Of course, we didn't have recordings, sorry, the one time we don't record. It's, it, you have two sets of ears listening, all of a sudden, you can triangulate, and you come up with that solution. If it's a board issue, if it's a college issue, that's your problem, the way I look at it, in the sense of institutional statements. But if it's an institutional where the board has to intervene or get connected, I think you and two other board members should go talk to Stowe, because it's, it's...
We could and we would under this language.
And that would be appropriate, in my mind, because then we have three ears, three sets of ears listening, and we get a valid basis, rather than how it's written right now. That's, you know, it's just the wordsmithing, I think we do, need to do that, you know, everybody will feel comfortable. Again, when you first read it, you can pick through these things, and you come up with so many what-ifs, it, you know, it, and I have more, but, you know, just with the other questions, with the changes, so, I'm good with retyping it. I can give you some of my notes, and you can kind of play with it. I can give you some of my notes, and you can kind of play with them.
It's based on all of our conversation, I know Carrie has to...
And I don't mind sharing those, those are just thoughts, you know, they might be appropriate, they might not be, but...
So are you comfortable moving ahead with the wordsmithing on what we've said?
Yeah, once we get to see it, yeah, let's stamp it up next month.
Okay, so you don't, you're not comfortable with it as is, with the wordsmithing?
Well, I, I don't have it in front of me to reread again, I'm sorry, you know, it's, it's just like reading anything else, you know, we, did, did we get everything in there, you know, that we talked about? That's where, this discussion is good, because this will get us off a dead center, onto the next page, so we can get this thing approved. I'm not against policies and procedures, I just want to make sure that it's for the benefit of the whole Board.
Okay.
And there's a we in our pocket.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the process is, we'll need to vote on this. Either yea or nay.
Or you can vote to take it.
I vote...
Or we can take an alternative motion to, to set this aside.
I would move that we set it aside for the final wordsmithing, and we vote on it next month. I'm good with that.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have...
I would second that motion.
Well, you're too late, Jean, sorry pal.
Too late, you got a third.
Yeah, we do have a motion and a second, Jean, to table this item till the next meeting, and till we see the wordsmithing, and can further discuss it and continue from there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying, oh, roll call, oh, sorry, Carrie, leaving you out.
Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
I'll vote aye.
Excuse me, item B, Board of Trustees Procedure 16-01, Code of Ethics Revision. You have item, you should have item B in front of you. This is the Code of Ethics. It looks like we have inserted the first line there that you see in red, and I'll read it for everybody here. After item A, which reads, each trustee will sign the Code of Ethics upon being sworn into office, then item B becomes, for minor concerns, the first step is one-to-one communication between trustee and trustee for a possible solution. So what that's saying, in the case of an issue that arises between trustees, the first step is they should get together and talk face-to-face. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay. The next, which now will be item D, reads, after consultation with the college CEO or President, legal counsel and perhaps others to determine what action is appropriate, the Board President shall determine whether the matter can be resolved informally. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. And then, so that's the extent of the revisions. Are there any questions, any discussions?
Well, for purposes of getting it on the table, I guess, I would move for its adoption. I'd move that we pass item, whatever it is.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I would second.
We have a second to approve. Any further discussion? Jean, did you hear?
I, I heard it, yes.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, may I take a roll call?
Somebody out there throw something at me.
Trustee Hou.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
Okay, item C, which is, Board Meeting Order of Agenda. First of all, as you can probably see, those of you who have looked at the agenda, you noticed that there was some changes in the agenda. We discussed this at our Board Retreat, and we did some of it on a trial basis, and that is to move some items around, the most significant is moving action items forward. So in the case of a long meeting, not that we would ever have one, that kind of gets towards the, the front of the meeting, and then if we have to cut the meeting short, we don't leave action items out, we go ahead and get to those, so, and I think everybody is, is particularly pleased with that. So, having said that, if we move on down on Board of Trustees Procedure 40-01, Board Meeting Order of Agenda Revision, on down to D, this is being done for the purpose of flexibility in our agenda. For years, the agenda has been very, very defined, and there was little room for flexibility in the case of unforeseen items that need to be added to the agenda, or Board, Boards needing, meeting at different locations, or any multitude of things. So what item D says is, just simply, that all regular meetings of the Board will include call-to-order, approval of the agenda, with additions or deletions, will include public comment, action items, executive session if needed, and adjournment. And all of the other items that were listed are inclusive of those items. Item E then states, the agenda for regular meetings of the Board may include the following, may include the following, pledge of allegiance, consent agenda, presentations from guests and representatives to the Board, information items, college or CEO President's report, comments from trustees, and assessment of the Board meetings. So those are, may include, and not necessarily must be included, hence our flexibility. So, and that's the extent of the changes in that.
I can add some context.
I'm sorry?
I can add context if you'd like.
Add context, if you would like, sure. Always feel welcome to do that.
I'm going over here.
Talking to Jean.
So I'm going to add some, some context. Again, in our retreat, we were talking about having some more flexibility in our agenda writing, basically, so, and we didn't spend a lot of time talking about it, it was a couple sentences. So, the way we came up with this, we, Carrie and I, and flew it by, actually, I don't even think we flew it by Stowe, honestly, is we really looked at statute and really our sister institutions, on what is the minimal that you must discuss in a Board meeting? So in statute, what must we discuss as a Board? So in letter D, those sections, if you will, must be there, if needed. Executive session, you don't have to have, but if you need executive, you, the letter E, you don't have to have, in fact, boards are all over the place. Some Boards pledge allegiance, some Boards don't. Some Boards have comments from trustees, some Boards don't. Some Boards have CEO presentations, some Boards don't. So really, that's how we were trying to separate that out. So remember, policy and procedure is written for future Boards, that future Boards can decide, other than the must sections, what they want to add in. Some Boards may say, our, it'll probably, it'll be interesting to hear in the audience, some future AMES Boards may say, our Board meetings are way too long.
In the future?
In the future. And so future Boards may say, you know, we, we don't want President's report, we don't want comments from the Board, we just want, you know, actual items and board on. So this allows for that.
Right.
And so that's the context of this.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
So is there any questions or comment on that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've just been thinking, or trying to think, when it says may include, only, or I would read this, is may include only the following.
On letter E?
Yeah.
It doesn't say only.
No, I think it, it sort of implies that, these are the things that you may...
Only.
...you may have on your agenda. So are we missing anything? Are we...
Oh, you mean like, may include but not limited to...
Yeah, maybe, you know, there's something else that we may want to put on the...
May include but not limited to these things, yeah.
You know, these are, I would say, these, some way are just examples of what we can...
You're right.
...put on the agenda.
Right. And my concern...
And they're not limited to that.
Right.
Yeah, agreed.
And my concern to Dr. B, when we spoke about this, was, this is all the stuff that I know you all like to hear about, it's all the good stuff, it's all the stuff that makes AMES what it is, you know, you're connected, you have community, you have each other, so I wanted to make sure that wasn't something that was going to be, you know, on the wayside, so I appreciate it.
As you all still want...
Right.
On my, on my side, you know, I, I would just, you know, obviously, it's the "may" is the verb that we're looking at, kind of, I think it's a verb, or an adverb.
I think it's a verb.
It's a Mark verb.
It's a Mark verb. Is, how would we look at each one of those items and say, when we wouldn't include it? It's like, I can't imagine Lyle missing the pledge allegiance, you know, that would be an impossibility. And for good reason, he served this country well. You know, all of these things can change as elected officials. Do we want to use that for Board Member comments? Do we have, do we lose the right to make that statement? In this particular thing, we, we kind of give that up and say, well, maybe we don't want to hear from Mark talk about social service needs, and, and I can use myself as examples, because sometimes I ramble off, and I might be out of bounds on college business. And that, that would be a way to curtail that, you know, unless, you know, somebody pulls me aside and says, you know, you've got to do better. If everybody's, is everybody following me on that? You know, I would just say, that's, that's kind of a...
I'm not.
You're not following me on that?
No, sir.
So Board comments, Board Meeting comments, comments from trustees.
If the Board decided that the Board didn't want to hear comments from trustees, then the Board is not...
We don't...
This is your meeting.
Is that a, is that a President's, or is that, is that the Chair's responsibility?
The Board's. We get, we get to do it.
Okay. I'm fine with it, it's the only thing that, "may" is kind of the verb that says, you know...
So if you read under the very first sentence of this procedure on the purpose, it said the Board President, in consultation with the rest of the Board of Trustees and the CEO President, will determine the agenda at all of Board meetings. So if you all just decided, like, let's, let's take, if you all decided, you know, the President's report is way too long, we're not doing that anymore, and you all, and there's a four-to-one vote, there's a three-to-two vote, and voted.
Right.
We're not going to do it.
Or we'll do it in work session, or whatever.
Yeah. You, you decide.
So we decide, okay. Any other discussion?
Can we change the word "may" some way?
Yes, what I looked at is, may include, not limited to the following colon, so...
So we'll leave "may," but we'll just add the "not limited to."
That's good.
Okay?
That satisfies me.
Okay, anything else?
Jean, did you hear anything? And maybe we ought to have a motion to include those words, or...
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so...
Yeah, that's how you make your motion, to include the addition, or the revision. Jean, did you hear that? Hello, Jean?
He's not there.
Okay.
You want to make that motion?
Jean, that was a slice, buddy. Catch up with us. Okay.
We got three.
So the motion, should read something to the effect, to, to approve Action Item 7C to include...
Jean had to sign off.
Oh, you had to sign off, okay. To include the revision, may...
Not limited to.
But not limited to, okay? Do I have someone that would make that motion?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Carrie?
Roll call.
We'll do a roll call, just in case.
Trustee Hou.
Yea.
Trustee O'Hara has signed off from the meeting, so he will not be voting. Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you very much. Next item, 7D, Board of Trustees Policy 7D70, Delegation of Authority to the College CEO This policy revision, under item one, becomes, to interpret, implement, and comply with all policies, procedures, rules, regulations, laws, contracts, and other authorized directives, followed by a new, item two, consult with legal counsel.
So I can also give context if you would like?
I'm sorry?
I could also give context.
That's the only revision I see, is adding number two, and all the others change. So, and Dr. B can provide context?
Makes sense.
Please.
So I actually have to chuckle, because I thought this is the one that you would have a hard time with, because we actually didn't talk about this one in the retreat.
No, we didn't.
When Carrie and I were looking through some of the policies, based on the conversation in retreat about legal counsel, we found this one. And even though the CEO President works with legal counsel all the time, and this is delegation of authority to the CEO President, nowhere in there does it say that the CEO President can consult with legal counsel. So we thought, well, since the, this is a conversation among the Board, we probably want to put this in there. So, so you did not discuss this policy at the retreats, this one, but we are presenting this to you, as you may want to include that, to give the authority to the CEO President to consult with legal counsel. It's a general statement.
I think we, we discussed the, the relationship with institutional legal counsel, the five or seven of them you have, and then we have the Board's legal counsel. That, that's the only area that, you know, I, I would think the President, it goes back to that first statement, in the one that we're, that we're rewriting, and then it shows...
I think that...
Did you follow me?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to have, if it's about the Board, then it needs to have a Board, Board Members there, or whatever, with legal counsel. If it's about the institutional knowledge, as far as, you know, what happened in 1983, do you have any records on that?
Well, I guess, from this side, then, I would might...
You can call them on your own, huh?
Well, that's what I was going to say, from this side of the desk, in practice, I don't know if we can really draw that line, because there are many times, quite frankly, that either Carrie or I do call Stowe...
Sure.
...to clarify, and, and it may be clarification around Board, discussion, action, so forth, so that we can move forward. So if we're making that line clearly drawn in the sand, then that stymies our ability to execute for you. So, I'm not sure that I would define it that way.
Isn't it like the and/or, or is it a...
Or, not on this side. May, maybe...
It's on the different side of the...
This is on, this is on...
The institutional side. Well, I don't have a problem on the institutional side. When it crosses over to the other side, then I, I just want to be on the same page.
Yeah, and I don't think we are yet, so... This is regarding your duties as a CEO President. I might need to call Stowe to talk about something we're talking about on the Board. Yes.
And you got the time and effort to do it. And you got the time and effort to do it?
Yes.
So, I need the authority to do that.
She needs the authority.
It's never been in writing. You've been doing it all this time.
It's the same as the other one, never been in writing, just in practice. So, we're just putting it in writing on spend done and accept. That's all that's been done. Okay?
Okay.
I'm okay.
With your duties.
We're okay.
Because it's regarding your duties.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Go for it.
And did I hear a second?
You got a second.
No, second, yes, right, of course.
Okay, wake up, Ray. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt item seven D. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Since Jean's off, do you want to do a roll call?
Please.
Okay, please.
For consistency throughout the meeting.
Consistency.
Trustee Howe.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving on. I think we are down to policy or item seven E. Policy three dash one ten, hiring of external auditor revision. Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Chairman, happy how are you, item seven E? It's a revision to policy three dash one one zero, hiring of an external auditor. And you can see by the redlined document that we're just making some wording changes and more clearly defining the type of audit we're doing. The type of audit we do is a financial statement and single audit. The old, the old verbiage was audit of all funds and budgets, which makes no sense in today's world. So, it's a change of that. And then referring to it in a singular version as far as we hire an external auditor. We only have one. Thank goodness. So, you have before you the policy revisions and the administrative recommendation is do approve. Stand for questions.
Okay, any questions on Mr. Jensen?
I would move that we pass the revisions to policy two zero two. No. To policy three one.
That would be the revised name would be policy two zero two would be renumbered, yes. I should have mentioned that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, item F, policy five dash one oh one, international student admission repeal. Dr. Sarah Weiskever, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I have before you the policy five dash one oh one, international student admission repeal. This is part of our policy and procedure reformation process that we are working through. You have some summary of the issue here. In short, we are requesting to repeal the international student policy, which allows us to accept F one, M one, and J one visas into Ames Community College and instead create a procedure under our general admissions policy that is more specific to non-US citizens. It would be noted that it is not the intent of the institution at that this time to continue accepting F one, M one, or J one visas due to the very low enrollment that we saw in the college as we were serving those students previously. So, just as a quick data point for you, between academic years fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, nineteen, we had an average of sixteen students a year. And that equated to about a 1.0 FTE to serve those students, those sixteen students a year. And so, based on that, as well as some of the additional factors that I have listed there in the summary of the issue, we are recommending that we repeal this policy and move some of these pieces into another procedure. Do you have any questions?
What's F one, M one, J one?
It is, yeah, it's part of Department of Homeland Security's, the Student Exchange Visitor Program. There are different types of visas that individuals can enter our country with. These are specific visas to education and work. And so, institutions grant these visas on behalf of the Department of Homeland Security to ensure that these students are following the regulations for being in country with their visa. And so, our recommendation is that we, in practice, we have not done this for about a year because we saw such a sharp decline in the program. And so, really, we're asking for the board's permission to formalize that, recognizing that if we see an opportunity in the far, far future when we have the better ability to ethically serve these students, that the institution could reconsider at that time.
Does this help us dovetail to the Ames to UNC?
Uh, no.
Or doesn't have anything to do with that?
No.
Dr. Weiskever?
Yes.
Let's see, I did have a question on, you mentioned the college's intensive English program does not align with the S E V P E S L pathway. What specifics, not that we're going to do it, but what specifics were we not aligned to?
We didn't offer a high enough ESL in order for the student to go through the full ESL program here without having to transfer to UNC. So, while Ames was making ourselves responsible for offering that English as a second language to these students, we couldn't complete the course and therefore ensure our compliance.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to have you further explain the idea that we can deal with these students in some other way. I think that's what you said, isn't it?
No, so my recommendation is that we do not, the institution not accept F one, M one, or J one visa students.
So, then.
However, there are many students that are international students who do not fall into this category. So, my recommendation, our recommendation is that we pull the F one, these, this small group of visa students out and put them over here while allowing the institution to still serve other international students who do not need those type of visas.
Okay, so the institution is still open
Yes.
to foreign students that have proper visas.
Absolutely.
Are any students in this mid drift or will they, we allow them to complete and then they?
Right, so there are currently, in the nineteen, twenty academic year, there are six students. And so, we're working on getting them through the program. They'll still be able to be served. But once they're gone, we would not accept anymore.
Does UNC accept these students?
They do.
Okay.
They have a very robust international student program.
They, oh, so they accept them?
Yes. And they have the accommodations that really, really enable them to serve these students very well.
Okay. So, it's a benefit to Ames, or to UNC?
It is a benefit to UNC and it is an ethical decision by Ames.
Sure.
Very good. Very good. Motion. Any other discussion?
No, I'm not going to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item.
Item seven F.
Item seven F, that's what I thought.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to item, we accept item seven F. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, and that concludes our action items. We move on to item eight, information items. You all have in front of you or in your packet your board calendar of events. Are there any questions on the calendar of events? I would review those.
Chair Oxiger?
Yes, please.
I would like to add one item to the calendar of events.
Oh, I was going to do that, but go ahead. No, you go right ahead.
We have one additional item to your calendar, which is the United Way Celebration. It will be on Saturday, March twenty eighth at five thirty PM and held at the Doubletree in Greeley. We do have two seats available for our Board of Trustees. So, if you would just please let me know if you are interested, we will.
What event was that?
United Way.
It's the United Way Celebration.
March twenty eighth at five thirty.
Correct. March twenty eighth, five thirty PM at the Doubletree in Greeley.
Okay. Any other changes? Okay. The ACCT Legislative Summit Report, and this addresses as board priority BA. But Timothy Allman and I attended this Legislative Summit. I think we definitely should attend that, although I think two representatives is a big plenty. There was a lot of information this time that didn't necessarily apply to Ames Community College. However, there certainly was some. We had some, a couple of open sessions. We had some excellent speakers from our legislature or their representatives. I think the, probably the most that I got out of it, well, two things. I had several conversations with just trustees and or board presidents from other colleges. And a lot, we're actually known across the country in some sectors. People know about Ames Community College. And some of the questions were about, I had got one question about our Ames to UNC program. So, that was awesome to hear that at a Legislative Summit in Washington DC. A couple of other questions were about our, our funding, how we fund Ames Community College. So, we had some very good discussions about that and a couple of folks actually asked how they could do that. So, in fact, that actually came up at a meeting with Undersecretary of Education, Scott Stumpf, who we visited. So, we did get to visit some of our legislative representatives. And I'm going to have Timothy Allman come up and do that part of our presentation. And he can talk about who we met with and some of the grants that we addressed and how we can help each other address various issues. Timothy, thank you.
And if I may, I'm going to pass around the
Certainly.
the full sheet of what the ACCT legislative folks gave us. We spent one morning when they, they went through each one of these items here. And these are items that they wanted us to, when we spoke with our legislators, to emphasize. And so, when Chair Oxiger and I looked at these, we bulleted four of them that particularly pertain to Ames. And that's, the first one is short-term Pell Grants. And this is aimed at those short-term programs that Ames and other community colleges offer. Right now, a regular Pell Grant, you know, takes two thirds of the year. You've got to be there and then you're eligible for it. These are on much shorter duration. And so, we encouraged our legislators to pass that and they were all on board. And by the way, we met with Senators Gardner and Bennett, Congressman Buck and the Goose. So, which was just fantastic. And they were, couldn't have been more hospitable. And every single one of them, we showed up in their office, they said, yeah, we heard the Secretary of Education was out to visit you all.
Oh, that's nice.
We had one, this was a very nice thing. We were in Senator Gardner's office and, and they were just literally just all abuzz. And they said, when Senator Gardner at the State of the Union address, you know, when everybody's milling around in the front there and Secretary DeVos was down there and all she could talk about was Ames and how great it was and the great things that we're doing here. So, it's like, not bad to be on the, you know, on the floor and you're being discussed there. That's fantastic. So, hats off to all of Ames for doing that. That's fantastic. The, so we, we encouraged the short-term Pell. The last item on the first page, first side of the page here is enhanced transparency and data. There's a lot of verbiage there, but the bottom line here is they want to track students from the time that they are admitted to the time that they sit in the seat, graduate, and go get a job and how much they're, they're making, are they working in their sector? You know, that's a lot of accountability. We'll see how that one goes. But it, you know, it's a good thing, you know, for us, it's helpful for us to know as well because we track a lot of that. And it's like, yes, our people are actually going to work in the areas that they're training for. So, on the second, second side of the page there, the first one, support student access and success. And this is, you know, with the Trigo Program, the Gear Up Program, Federal Work Study, all of these different types of programs. And we are, you know, definitely solidly in favor of that. And it was a continuation, encouraging them to continue that, to fund it. And then the last one, they're bolster job training and career technical education. And it's like, well, exactly, that's, that is what we do. And we do it very well. And again, as Secretary DeVos saw, we were pretty much leading the pack on that. We're doing a great job. So, those were the areas that we highlighted there for them. And again, as I said, they were very, very supportive. And, you know, Chair Oxiger just did a great job representing Ames. Spoke very well, very well received. And it helps even, he even knows these guys. So, that worked, that worked out very well. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And one of the things that we did, we kind of turned it around on them. So many people were there asking for help and we kind of turned it around on them and said, help when we help you. So, they were especially appreciative of that and kind of blown away, kind of, weren't they? So, it was, it was great to be able to do that. So, all in all, a good trip. Item C, do you want to talk about postponing or do you want me to? Okay, we're going to postpone the foundation update from trustee Jean O'Hara simply because he's absent. So, we'll postpone that report. And then the June retreat topics, we are having a meeting or a retreat rather in June, seventeenth and eighteenth. The details to be announced, but we're going to have to have some topics. We really like to have some topics for that. So, to each of you on the board, I would ask that you submit topics that you would like to see at the retreat. And if you could get those to us, either Carrie or myself, by March eighteenth, it would be appreciated. And then we can set the agenda and talk to Pam so that she is aware. Go ahead.
The reason why the time is so short about topics is because Pam's right, we have Pam in a holding pattern and she needs to know from us. Yep. She needs to know from us if, if, you know, how she needs to be engaged or how much time she needs to hold because she's being asked by other boards as well. So, that's the short time.
Yeah, it is short.
What's that, March what?
March eighteenth. Yesterday.
So, does that mean she's on hold for?
She's holding her calendar for us. But she's also being asked by other boards for that same time. So, she's asking us to get back to her quickly as far as what we need.
Wouldn't she come anyways?
Do we need one day? Do we need two days? Do we need three days? Do we need, you know, that? So, based on topics that you all have, will deter, the agenda will determine her time. Your topics will determine the agenda. Sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
And we can still do two days if there's some topics on the agenda where we don't need Pam there. Then we can release her and we can go ahead and do the other day ourselves. So.
The foundation.
Okay. Any questions on the, on the calendar? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the CEO and President's Report. Dr. Bornstein.
Thank you. I know it's the end of the day. You've got some sugar in front of you if you want to have some sugar. We would actually like to start with a brief update on COVID-19. So, that's the coronavirus that we've been all working on with regard to processes and our emergency operations plan. And you heard Brooke earlier that faculty are having lots of wonderful but and fast conversations about what ifs. So, John is here as well as Cabinet is actually going to join him. Even though they're sitting, they're going to stand up because they're tired too and they need to wake up. And not to take a long time, but we also want you to be confident, knowing that we are looking at everything possible so that I'm sure folks in your communities are gonna be saying, hey, you're in the board, what's Ames doing? You may not remember everything we tell you today, but we're hoping that you can walk away feeling confident, saying, we just heard a presentation, Ames is on top of it. So John's gonna start, and we'll just give one or two other sentences from all the divisions, just so that you know what's going on. John, please.
Okay. So good afternoon. Just to give you a quick update. My department is in direct contact with Weld County Department of Health, Laramie County Department of Health, and the State Department of Health. So we are keeping in contact with them. We get daily updates on tests, people that are testing positive, people that are thinking they're positive and, and making allegations. We get the confirmation from, directly from the Department of Health. We're also looking at our E O P, which is our Emergency Operations Plan, and we've put that into action way before this even started to even reach Colorado. Up to date as now, I keep checking, there's still not a confirmed case in Weld County. There is one in Laramie County, but they have been quarantined in Johnstown. So we are monitoring, we're keeping up with all the listservs and what other schools are doing. The executive I R team, which is, Timothy is a part of, I'm keeping in direct communication with him. So we are on top of it, and we're making plans and preparing for the worst, but hoping for the best.
Thank you, John. And just in terms of that one or two sentences, wanted to share with you, as of early as last week, all the deans have been working with their chairs and faculty, going through all the continuity of operations plan. So we have contingency plans on top of contingency plans. And so as Dr. Bornstein mentioned, that Brooke already mentioned, we have faculty already looking in terms of how we move some content potentially online. But one other key piece, our goal is to help our students finish their classes with as little disruption as possible. So that's our ultimate goal, and we'll do everything in terms of providing not only the students, which Dr. Weiscover will talk about, but in particular, our faculty, the tools and resources that they need to continue their operations. And as you know, it's not just a simple cookie cutter that we can do one thing that's gonna solve everything. And just to give you one level of detail, we are, we work with a hundred and twenty-five, or I'm sorry, forty-five different school, high schools with twenty-five different classes, and then all those number of instructors will have to do different things, depending on what those institutions are doing as well. So we are absolutely going into that level of detail. The last thing I'll share with you is we did send a note out to all of our faculty today, because we are encouraging not only our faculty and staff, but in particular, our students, that if you do not feel well, please stay at home. So we're trying to remove any obstacle for them to feel kinda safe at staying at home, that they won't miss anything. So like the attendance and all of those pieces. And that message did come out from not only myself, but also the leadership of the Ames Faculty Association. So we're in tight communication, not only with academic affairs leadership, but our faculty leadership as well in terms of how to best handle the situation.
From the student side, I can share with you that late last week, they started some of our pre-planning meetings based on C D C guidelines and, of course, the recommendations of our Safety Security Office. We've developed communication and support around addressing the stigma of COVID nineteen. That seems to be a concerning issue on college campuses. That's posted on our website. We're also supporting the institution and quickly implemented an attendance monitoring process so that we have a better idea of, from an aggregate level, students who are not here. As Dr. Rothmer said, we're encouraging all students to stay home if they feel ill. And so the more information we have, the better decisions we can make. There's a lot of anxiety and worry around COVID nineteen. We've offered up our counseling services to ensure those pieces are in place. We're also working in our registrar's office, in our financial aid office, to ensure that students are not negatively impacted, depending on the direction that the institution chooses to go. We continue to remain in close monitoring all student travel, though we are following what most institutions in the region are doing, which is not restricting, of course, any kind of personal travel, but being very careful about travel to states that are at a C D C Level Two or Three. At this point, as of three o'clock yesterday afternoon, there was only four states, and we have no student travel, student travel that is institutionally sponsored, planned for that time throughout the end of the semester. And we'll see what's yet to come. Big events coming up, so we'll keep you updated.
Good afternoon. From an employee perspective, H R is working on some procedures and protocols to encourage employees to stay home when they're sick, and how we can continue to provide support for them. With that, we'll be putting together an emergency paid time off plan that we'll be communicating out very soon. We also are very aware of the emotional stress this is for some employees. So we'll be providing additional E A P resources for employees. And we'll also have in plan a contingency plan, so if we have a need to allow employees to work remotely, we can do that on a case-by-case basis. And also a contingency plan if we need to contain certain support services so we can continue with our day-to-day operations in supporting our employees.
Just a quick couple of updates from administrative services. We're definitely, of course, focusing on continued operations so that we can continue to pay our bills and pay our people. So contingency is there to be able to work remotely, things like that. Our facilities are continuing to focus on and enhancing cleaning, paying attention to surfaces, doorknobs, things like that. And just to kinda tack on with Sarah's, we'll be reviewing employee travel and making determinations there too in the same way as we've done with student, as to any restrictions, no restrictions at this point, but stay tuned.
On the technology side, we're preparing for everything from little to a lot. So we've gotta be able to try to give, give these folks, give faculty and students and staff the tools that they need to. If they need to work remotely, we can provide that. If they need to get to their services with their devices or with college devices, we're trying to work through all of that as well. So we're preparing all those plans. Most of that is already kind of in place, but we're creating plans to be able to adapt as we need to, as this evolves.
Bringing up the tail here because we do the communications, we've been facilitating all of this here. If you get on our website, you'll see as of yesterday, we put in a, a link for a COVID nineteen information and updates page. And the feedback we've gotten from that has been very, very positive, so we're glad to have that. That will continually update. I know myself, and then one other person, Julia, is watching information regularly. We also coordinate with John, just to make sure that if there's any new developments, we put it in there. One of the things that we did, because we got just inundated with all kinds of well wishes and well-meaning people saying, well, you ought to do this, and you ought to do this, and you ought to do this. People should, they had lists of things that people should and shouldn't do. You know what list we're going with? The one from the C D C. Yeah, so we're staying consistent with that. So it is a consistent message, you know, in, you know, Ames, Weld County, Laramie County, all, all the colleges, universities throughout the state, throughout the United States. So that's what we're doing there. The, Dr. Bornstein sent out a letter, a file email yesterday to everybody at Ames. Just kind of letting them know what we're doing, and then pointing them to the, to the website. The other information that's gone out is Dr. Rothmer talked about, out to the faculty and staff. So just, you know, facilitating that. We've got for students coming as well. So anything that is, that is evolving, we're staying with it, staying on top of it. Okay, thank you.
Then also, just to let you know, because it's, we're all involved. So the C E Os and presidents across the state of Colorado have been communicating, texting, and yesterday at two thirty had a, had a conference call, basically sharing information. What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? And as Timothy had mentioned, everyone is making their own decisions because we're, quite frankly, all very unique, right? Universities will make different decisions than community colleges, residence halls versus no residence halls, athletics versus no athletics, large, huge events sponsors, small events sponsors, study abroad, no study abroad. So really, at every level. So there's lots and lots of conversations. We are making, we are following our excellent Emergency Operations Plan, and we're going to be making the decisions that's best for Ames, even though there are wonderful other things, but they may not affect Ames in the same way. So just to let you know, from my standpoint, we're, the C E Os are talking, talking, talking. Tonight, actually, at eight o'clock, the governor is having a conference call conversation with all the higher ed C E Os. And tomorrow, we are all meeting at noon to talk about, okay, we've gotten to this point, and we're, we're good right now, what if? So we're, we're moving forward, we're putting together these contingency plans, and then we're going to be having this conversation for, you know, what if, what about the next month? And we'll just keep you informed.
Does, he declared a state of emergency.
He did declare a state of emergency, yes.
How does that affect Ames?
So he declared that, and in his press release, he mentioned that he declared it, he's not. He's declared it so that really Colorado could get the resources that Colorado may need. But he's not, he's not making decisions for institutions as far as whether they stay open or closed. He's not closing schools at, at this moment. It, it really does change by the day and by the hour at this point. So.
When is spring break for Ames?
It's next week, spring break. And the college spring break at Ames, the college is not closed. Class, we don't have classes, so faculty and students aren't there, but the college is not closed.
Super job.
Well.
Thank you.
I wanna, thank you very much. You know, we really are unique. I've helped write the county emergency plan, and it's written actually pretty vague and pretty open, just for this reason, because each of us have our own uni, unique issues and operations and everything else. So it, it allows us to address our uniqueness, if you will. And I can tell you, we have an excellent team that has done that. And I think I speak on the board, and on behalf of the board, when I say this. We sincerely appreciate all of the work you've done, and we understand the long hours that you've put in recently in addressing this coronavirus and, and all of the planning it takes to address all the various potential contingencies. So we just, we can't say enough about how much we appreciate all the hard work and the dedication that you've put into this. And thank you. And certainly, if any of the other board members wanna comment, please do.
I, I kinda appreciate just hearing what, what you are implementing and what, you know, the concern. And it's kind of, it's something that's on a sliding scale as, as need, as a business owner. I'm sure Heidi's in the same, you know, we've got twenty-four families we, we affect directly every day. And, you know, so it's kind of a, what happens if their child's sick, what, what's the best thing to do? And then, you know, we have one already in that respect, but not, hasn't been diagnosed, it's probably more strep than anything. But, you know, just hearing out how, how, how to support that, you know? And we, we, we're kinda setting back funds so we can afford to keep the grocery bill paid and the rent paid for our staff, as well as, you know, let them be, feel comfortable to take off, because a lot of them are hourly or piecework. And it's, you know, it'll be a business challenge throughout the country.
I just wanna say thank you, considering everything you do already. And on top of this, I mean, it's another extra added effort, so I appreciate it. And it makes everyone feel comfortable that you're, you have a plan, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we'll move forward with the President's Report. Dr. Rothmer, would you like to update us on Chief Academic Officer and E V P, E V P Chief Academic Officer roles?
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, Chair Oxager, members of the board. I'll actually continue my earlier from the work session and be very, very brief. I know one of the things that you oftentimes get from Dr. Bornstein or see from the college is an update on enrollment. So I just wanted to give you kind of the picture as we go into spring break and talked to a few faculty members today that were in the middle of midterms. And wanted to share, at this point in time, overall, our Ames Community Colleges is up two point eight, eight-six percent in headcount and just point three percent in full-time equivalents or F T Es. Some interesting aspects of that are part-time student base, meaning less than twelve credits. It makes up seventy percent of our population. So we actually have more students taking fewer classes. And our full-time students then take approximately thirty percent. And that, about seventy percent of part-time students is a six percent increase from this time last year. One of the things I wanted to highlight for you is, even though that seems like a modest increase in enrollment, I'll tell you, we would not even be there if it weren't for the efforts that Ames Community Colleges and our teams and faculty are doing with our, in partnership with our high schools. That area of our enrollment is up over seventeen percent in terms of headcount, and about thirteen and a half percent in F T E. So again, another significant area, which also, as you remember our previous conversations and looking at how we support those learners and those faculty members, is important because, you know, they're not centrally located, they're out across the, our service area. So it adds a, a different challenge, but we are absolutely up to that challenge. One of the things I wanted to share and not go into a lot of detail, because I did promise to be brief, but I, I know there's been some questions as to kind of why are we at, where we are in terms of our enrollment. And Jeff Adcock, who you met last, several times, but he most recently presented last month, basically summed it up and made it easy for me to understand as well. He said, you know, the fundamental, fundamental answer is we're just kind of lagging the rest of the country. You know, everyone else has experienced a lot of these changes and downturns more significantly than Ames has, while Ames is finally kinda catching up, if you will, to the rest of the country. And kind of the, the big, big picture items that can be attributed to is the economic situation in two thousand and eight, where there was a significant decrease in the birth rate across the country. And really, what's saving Northern Colorado and the things that we're planning for, for Ames is the number of individuals moving to this area. So we have plans through our strategic enrollment plans and other pieces where we're looking at the six significant trends that are happening in, in enrollment management and different things. We already talked about concurrent enrollment. How do we take those students and really convert those and increase that yield of those high school students that are already taking concurrent enrollment? Get them to come to Ames to finish, and then either go into the workforce or onto their four-year degree. Looking at those business partnerships, expanding their distance learning, which we're kind of being, we have significant increase in online enrollment already, but with what we're having to do to prepare for the potential pandemic, we're even moving those pieces faster. You heard from Dean Abernathy earlier today, in terms of other strategies, is looking at often bachelor's degrees. And so again, Northern Colorado taking advantage of the pieces that are there. So we're, even though we've seen a slight increase and we haven't decreased as much, I am very confident in terms of we have the pieces in place to continue that growth, especially as we maximize what we've learned from the environmental scan and the populations that we have here to serve and as we target those individuals. The last thing I'll share with you is you do have that two-page piece in here, a lot of great student and faculty successes. And I'll just point those out to you and see if you have any questions, either around what's in your packet or enrollment, that we could go a little bit deeper for you and send information to you through Dr. Bornstein.
Do you have a breakdown of those stats on enrollment? Did you?
I can forward those to you, yes.
That would be great. I always enjoy watching or just seeing that, the changes and, yeah. So, high school.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chuck Johnson would like to give us a budget update for the month, as well as a workday update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you the budget report for January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. I'll make a couple of quick highlights on the tuition side of the picture. We continue to trend on budget, and we still have half of summer to collect. And so we anticipate that will probably be a little bit over budget. We will have collected more than we had budgeted in tuition, so again, positive on our tuition. Fees and other charges, the strength in that category has mainly to do with our increased enrollment and our aviation program. That's where all those flight fees go into that account. Our state appropriation, of course. Our state appropriation, of course, is, we anticipate or we expect to collect all of that. And then on general property taxes, just a clarification on that, you know, we are exceeding budget. But at the work session for the budget assumptions, I had notified the board that we have revised that budget to 86 million. So you'll be seeing that next month when I present the budget work session in April. That, you know, that, we had set that 68 million back prior to the final assessments coming from the county. And so when I did the budget assumptions in November, we had up that amount to 86 million. So we're right on track with our general property taxes with that revised budget amount. The other notable item on here again is our other revenue. That is mostly involving the reduction in our oil royalties for our land leases on our, on our oil and gas. On the expenditure side, again, I don't have anything to report. Everything's on track and we are comfortable with where the departments are in their expenditures. And so, again, as I say every year, every month, strong fiscal picture, strong management by our department, and very pleased. I stand for questions on budget.
Any questions, Chuck?
I'm good.
Oil production is going to be lagging here over the next, probably 18 months, so.
Yeah, it's things that we are, we'll be studying. Yep. Again, you know, we are seeing, and we look at the mix in the county between oil and gas, between residential and commercial. You know, so there are strengths in all sectors within the county. So is oil and gas important? Of course it is. But we could continue to see that in our other sectors too, so growth on all sectors in Weld County.
Well, I got you up here, I got an article passing on to Dr. B. Colorado is selling some of their mineral rights.
They're selling them?
Wyoming wants to buy them.
If I get one call a week, I get three calls a week from land brokers.
Oh, no, we could go buy some.
Oh, we could go buy some, oh.
I got a little bit of spare cash.
Oh, okay, well, that's an idea.
So Chuck, and you're talking with the various financial people. Do you think those oil and gas might normalize? I know there's a lot of stuff going on around the world with oil and oil prices and everything else.
It's really hard not to be reactionary right now because things change so quickly. So that's the stance that I'm taking is not to overpanic, but being very cautious going forward. I always like to continue to remind the board that as we do go forward, you know, we still have adequate reserves that if something were to dramatically change outside of the normal scope of activity, we have the ability to react over a period of time. And that period of time is not tomorrow. That period of time is 18, 24, 30 months down the road as we see that coming again with our property taxes. You know, we see those types of assessments changing 18 months from now. And so I'll continue to say this at every meeting, that we will have the time to see this coming at us. And from my position, that is a good, good avenue to have.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear when people ask us out there. That's what we need to be able to tell them.
We're well, we're well reserved.
Yep.
We've been very, very thoughtful in reserving those funds for these potential rainy days. And so, and we'll, again, next meeting at the work session, I'll be presenting the budget.
Sure.
So we'll have lots of opportunity to talk about those in more detail. And, you know, who knows by then, maybe the world will have settled down.
Yeah.
And, and so, again, that's the process. I mean, for the new board members, again, at the, at the next April meeting, we'll bring an action item for the compensation. And I'll bring the work session for the budget. And then ultimately culminates at the May meeting with an action item for next year's budget, so.
Sure.
That's the.
What, what meeting is that?
The May, the May meeting is the final approval for next year's budget. And approving the appropriation authority for the next fiscal year. Okay.
Okay.
The next exciting topic, Workday. You know, that's our, again, our changing of our ERP system banner, the words that you may have heard in the past. The banner we had for 22 years. Made the decision to move to the new platform called Workday. And I'm happy to report that we are four months away from going live with the HR and finance modules, or they call them tenants. And so that's been tremendous work from our staff. I mean, it's, we've, we've invested a lot of time and energy and our staff have responded fabulously. I mean, we're, we're on track. We meet with the Workday executives on a regular basis and all lights are green. They're very happy with our progress, they're very impressed with our progress. I think every time we meet with the Workday people, they continue to comment on the quality and the professionalism and the ability for our staff to get things done. So we're very proud of that project. We're now beginning the conversations and building resources and the plan in place to start the student implementation, which will begin this summer. And that'll be a two-year process to change all the student systems. So it's a stepped phase, HR, finance first, and then student in two years. So exciting project. Questions?
How much do we get in gaming monies?
Around 3 million, would you say, Julie?
I don't know.
Give me a minute, take it off.
We can get back to him.
I'll get back to you.
It's 2.5 million on state appropriation, is that gaming monies, all of it?
Let me get back to you, I'll.
I don't know, I just saw that for the first time in four years, so.
I'll get a number back to you, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Why?
I don't worry about millions, 2 million.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Put him back in his cage.
One second too long at the microphone. All right, Timothy, would you like to come up and talk to us a little bit about website redesign?
I'd be delighted, it's like, how do you follow that? So in keeping with the big things changing at Ames, the ERP with the other one that's coming up is the website redesign. I've kind of mentioned it to you before, but I've asked Zach to come up and kind of move you through this. Just give you kind of an overview of what's happening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, appreciate the time. Just a quick update on the website. We, we have made some significant progress, so excited to report that. Really, just as a reminder, what we're moving from is a system in which we were triaging most of the website, having to make critical updates regularly with not a lot of people attached to it. For us, we have 1.6 million people annually visit our website and they're viewing just shy of 4 million pages, you know, in a fiscal year. And so that, by Google standards, is a heavily trafficked site. And what we need to provide is a really good experience for people because they form their perceptions of our institution based off of their website experience. And so that's what we're focused on, really kind of growing and improving those communications and workflows and really transforming that experience. It's much needed, it's been a while since we've refreshed it at this level. To do that, we've put some people in place. This is the most exciting change that's happened in the recent past, and we have three people on board now. Hunter Wilson, they're actually right back here in the audience, brought him here in case anyone want to talk to him. Hunter Wilson's managing this project. He comes to us from UNC, we're very fortunate to have him. Erin Walton is our web content manager, so she's going to focus on the web content itself. We have about 10,000 pages of content that we're going to have to sort through. And then Ralu Kotba is our web developer, we've outsourced with him, and he's doing the development aspect of this. The other thing we've put in place is a steering committee, steering group, really key partners across the college that we can engage with and communicate and connect with the various people that we need to work with as we move on. Dr. Rothmer from academics, Brad Yoder IT, Shannon McCaslin, Jody Mark, the web team that I've highlighted, and then the marketing and communications team. And really, we just two weeks ago completed our strategic plan for this initiative. I wanted to just pull, I'm not going to belabor the point here, I'll pull out two. One is the content plan. I just mentioned that we have 10,000 pages, really across the entire institution, and so that's a big undertaking for us. And really, what we're starting to focus on right now is how to approach that. How do we parse out the content and get people from A to B where they need to go as quickly as possible? And so we have a good plan for that, we're moving into it, spearheading that initiative. And what we hope to see is good, concise content that people can find easily. And then number four, the communications plan. This is a very significant project. We can take the lead from a good group like the ERP project and their communications to the college. Since it does impact so many people, from prospective students all the way to current students, faculty and staff, we want to make sure we're communicating really well. And we're focused on that communications plan right now so that people know how we're approaching it, why we're approaching it the way we are, and how we're moving forward. And really, again, 18 to 24 months, we're still on our timeline. We're hoping to kind of close this out at the short end of that, but we're still looking at an 18 to 24 month project, so. That's the web update. Any questions?
What's, what is the average age of our students?
Oh, what are?
27.
27?
25, 25.
25, yeah.
Okay, so that's probably playing a role into your web.
Oh, yeah, you know, everyone, most of the people we're interacting with are digital natives at this point, Gen Z, Gen Y. And so it's very critical for them to have a good web experience because they're utilizing the web primarily.
Okay.
Big job.
Yeah, it's exciting, it's a very exciting opportunity.
And one thing that Zach didn't mention was that the number one way that people learn about, you know, Ames, it's not from billboards or, you know, handouts, the web overwhelmingly. So we've got to get this right, and so they're doing a great job with that. I just have a couple of brief, brief things. We've already talked, the coronavirus, and again, we're just really staying on top of that. And as we kind of morph and go through things, please keep on to the website there because that's where we're going to put a lot of that information so that it'll keep you abreast of it. And then, I think, looking at that, yeah, we had some excitement because Governor Paulus's office called us Tuesday in the afternoon and said, guess what, we're coming. We're going to come visit Ames and we're going to come visit UNC. And just as fast as that happened, we got another, I got an email as we were going in the work session that said, guess what, we're in a state of emergency, we're not coming. So we'll, we'll host the governor at a later date, so, oh, well, yeah. So it's, if you ever want to have and see some excitement and stuff that just doesn't stop, stop by the CCR office, the stuff is constantly going, so. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Weisgaver would like to update us on Ames, UNC and pathway advising.
Before we get to Ames, UNC and pathway advising, I'd like to just give you a couple of highlights because I feel like the folks who can best speak to those two strategic line items are the folks who are currently implementing them. So real quick update, you saw in your packet today, the score calendar. There's 48 different student activities happening during the month of March, and that is even including spring break. Spring break or March is typically a heavy activity month. It's a high engagement month for students. We will continue to monitor the ways in which coronavirus and the institutional response impacts those various activities and be sure to keep the board updated as we move forward. Operationally, the Council for Equity and Inclusion is working on several initiatives. The first is a really fun partnership with Human Resources to do some research and examine ways by which we can enhance recruiting, enhance hiring to work toward diversifying our staff here at Ames, our employees at Ames. So that's been an exciting project and a really fun partnership. The other piece I've mentioned a couple of times before is the College Climate Survey. Last Friday, we hosted two different organizations, Kaleidoscope and Rankin and Associates, on campus for on-campus interviews to determine who would be the best fit to help us with this assessment. We will be updating internally and then we'll hopefully have an update for you in April as a direction that will move then. We won't expect any significant changes to happen until about fall, when we get that project underway. Lastly, I would just share that my colleagues have done an amazing job. And as I've been watching your eyes, I see them kind of go, woo, every once in a while. They are leading some really incredible and amazing change. I think folks in my area are also doing the same. With that, Dr. Rothmer and I had the opportunity to partner in bringing pro-site change management to the institution for our cabinet as well as our kind of number two folks and our next level of leadership throughout the institution. It was a really great opportunity for folks to start thinking about change and thinking about how do we move individuals through change, given that we, we got a lot of really exciting stuff to do in the next few years. And those trainings were a great success. Any questions over those pieces before I invite my colleagues up? Nope? All right, with that, I would ask Assistant Vice President Erin Prestwich to join me. Also, transitions, or sorry, yeah, Transition Center Director Rachel Vareto and Advising Director Leslie Bicknell.
All right, good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Bornstein. We're excited to be here this afternoon on this nice sunny day. So we are excited to share some, I think, really important updates and impactful updates about our pathways advising department and also Ames to UNC. So you'll notice in the handout, there's some updates that we put in there. I'm going to highlight just a few of those. So starting out with pathways advising, I'd like to start with that first. I think we're in the process of making some really impactful philosophical and operational changes in our pathways advising department. So one is with the name, so we have changed our name to pathways advising. And one of the reasons that we have done that is because we're really, we're implementing pathways at the college and we really want to emphasize and focus on helping students enter a pathway and complete a pathway. And so we have changed our name to pathways advising. I think one of the operational shifts and improvements that you'll also see is that as opposed to having all generalist advisors, we've moved to having specialized pathways advisors. So all of our advisors are now specialized within one of our pathways. And so students are coming in and they're getting advising from advisors who are more specialized in those content academic areas. So I think that's been one of the big improvements that we have made. Another big improvement that we have made is that we are focusing on, as opposed to kind of the more prescriptive advising and the more focus on helping students build schedules and kind of the more traditional advising approach, we've really shifted towards more of a focus on how do we work with, how do we work more proactively in providing more holistic advising services to students? Again, how do we have more of a focus and an emphasis on helping students complete programs as opposed to just taking classes? We also have an emphasis on how do we, how do we track students? And how do we caseload students and really assign students to an advisor as opposed to just waiting for them to come in and tell us when they need help? So another big shift is that, that we're assigning students to an advisor. I think another important kind of data point that you'll see in there is that with the number of advisors that we have increased, we have changed our student-to-advisor ratio number. So this is a big deal because it gives the advisors the bandwidth and the time to be more proactive, to be more relational with, with our students. And so right now, that current caseload number, we've been able to decrease it to an average of 250 students per advisor. About three or four years ago, before we increased the number or before we started to increase the number of advisors, that average was about 400 to 1. So that's a big deal, that's a big investment that Ames has made, that the board has allowed us to make over the past few years to increase the number of advisors that we have so that we can, again, provide that more holistic support. There's a couple of other pieces before I take all the thunder about advising. I'd like to have Leslie Bicknell, our advising director, share a couple of the points on advising.
So, wow. I never felt quite so short, Erin. As Erin mentioned, I'm the program director for pathway advising here at Ames. And Erin and Sarah and I, we all get very excited about the progress that we've made over the last three years toward adopting a case management approach for our students here at Ames. And I think you've probably heard Dr. Weisgaver describe it as scaling up the trio model, and that's exactly what we're doing and we're very excited about it. Some other things that Erin and I wanted to share with you today is that we're training all of our pathways advisors and some of our other say-staff as well with a well-known company out of Denver called Lifebound Coaching. They're doing three days of training for our pathway advisors to teach them how to empower our students so that they can cultivate a vision for what their future can look like, both personally, academically, and also career-wise. So really, to empower our students to begin to navigate their educational processes and to coach them through that. So we're very excited about that training. We are also very excited that as we started working toward this case management model, we had to work from generalized advising, as Erin was explaining to you, to a more assigned advisor approach. And that's a very manual process. So over the last three semesters, four semesters, we've been assigning only new students who are declared in degree-seeking or certificate-seeking to an academic advisor. This spring, we decided we were going to bite the bullet. This spring, we decided we were going to bite the bullet and get all of our students assigned. So, over fifteen-hundred students, new spring students and continuing students have been signed to advisors, and this is our first opportunity to really know what our caseloads look like, so we're very excited about that. We're also working with a Hyberg product called Student Access. It is traditionally a software program designed for trio programs and adapting it for our use, and we'll be going live with that for this spring, this summer and fall registration, March thirtieth. So, we're doing a lot of training and planning and working with that as well, so. Very exciting happenings, we're going to be able to really proactively reach out and communicate to all of our students and bring them in to see us more often, so. Thank you.
So, I think over the years, advising has been recognized as a department across many institutions in the country as a really key component for retention for our students because these impact thousands of our students. And so, I think these are, it's a really key initiative. Before we move on to Ames to UNC, does anyone, anyone have any questions about our advising updates?
You probably have already identified, when, when do you, what's the tipping point for keeping a student or losing one? Is it?
Tipping point for?
Keeping one or losing one?
Oh.
Is there a watershed point that you?
No, not necessarily.
Or is that just a moving target?
It is a moving target and it all depends on the student. And so, I think that's one of the reasons why this relational advising is so important because we can really get into building relationships with students and helping to understand what are their goals, what do they want to accomplish, and then what might keep them from those goals, and then how can we?
I'm really excited that you informed us about these new steps. It makes us better board members and better advocates for the school. I think it's amazing what you're doing, and there's so many students out there that really need that little extra pathway for them to connect to their future, so you're doing a great job. Thank you.
So, do I understand it right, when an advisor is assigned to a student, that that advisor stays with that student?
Correct.
Okay, and that, that's, I think, huge. One of the things that I've noticed is that some of our excellence at Ames students have come in and spoken to us and they've indicated to us how much they appreciate their advisor and how they've actually became friends and they continue to be advised by that person even afterwards. I, I just, I think that's huge and thank you for that.
Thank you.
I, you know, I think this is an absolutely wonderful thing that just sounds so dedicated to student success, which is so important. But are you doing any statistical research on it, like, I see some guesses going?
Yeah, so we do have an assessment plan that we're continuing looking at our intervention practices and how they're impacting students. And I think we also have some core measures from our broader pathways kind of efforts. And so, we're looking at different core measures and different steps that the institution is taking to see how we're impacting those core measures.
And is there an attempt to, I don't know what, say, show completion rates versus before this?
Yep, so we're looking, starting to look at baseline data and starting to look at what were our, you know, fall to spring persistence rates, what are our fall to fall retention rates, what are our completion and graduation rates? So, we're establishing baseline measures for all of those so that we can then track and compare our efforts and initiatives now compared to what our baseline data is.
Super, wonderful.
All right, Rachel Vareto was going to talk about Ames to UNC.
I'm surprised I have to move it lower. Good afternoon, trustees, Dr. Bornstein, I know that you're very excited about this, Dr. B. So, the Ames to UNC transition program supports students that have the goal of earning an associate's degree from Ames and a four-year degree from the University of Northern Colorado. This work does not begin at the point in time when students are preparing to move from a two-year to a four-year institution like traditional programs focus on. Rather, this program looks to support students throughout their educational journey towards a four-year degree at both institutions. And herein lies what makes Ames to UNC so special. To ensure the seamless transition of our students, we have developed a holistic model centered on three pillars. Developing community and belonging on both campuses, providing targeted streamlined advising towards both an associate's and a bachelor's degree. And then also there is significant, significant cost savings associated with this program. Maryam Webster defines transition as the process of changing from one state or condition to another. Through this program, that process is drawn out and meaningful. And although these students will always be aardvarks, this program is set up to help them also become bears. In order to address how we're meeting the goals of Ames to UNC, we've included a program update in your meeting packet that you can refer to. But we'd also like to share a few updates and highlights here with you all today. There are currently a hundred-and-thirteen participants in the program of which, of which forty-one percent are on track to graduate and transition to UNC this upcoming fall semester. Ninety-five percent of the fall Ames to UNC cohort persisted to the current term and seventy percent of those students are registered full-time this semester. To put these numbers into context, Doctors Bornstein and Feinstein set a participation target of serving sixty students in our first year. And if anybody's doing the math right now, we've exceeded that goal by eighty-eight percent. So, our student profile in this first year, we've got about fifty percent of our students identifying in that traditional age category, the eighteen to twenty-one. Seventy-five percent of our students identify as female. Seventy-one percent of our students are first generation. Fifty-one percent of our students identify as students of color and of those students, thirty-nine percent identify as Latinx. And when you're looking at your board insert there, it's a little bit different because we were able to include the spring students that we've been accepting. Finally, in partnership with the Office of Financial Aid and with your continued financial support of this work, we were able to award twenty-eight thousand dollars in scholarships to our fall students who continued this spring. These first-year data are impressive and our ability to measure initial impact on the long-term program goal, that participants complete their, their bachelor's degree, that's still a little ways down the road. What we can share is that Ames to UNC and the recently introduced Senate Bill one-four-three, Funding Higher Education Student Transitions Pilot Programs, will create an opportunity for our peers across the state to develop strong inter-institutional partnerships and implement transition programs that meet the needs of their communities. The cumulative effect of creating transition, of creating student transition programs across the state, which Ames to UNC has pioneered, will without a doubt impact Colorado's overall economy and the quality of life for our residents. As we know, data and metrics only tell a part of the story, it's the student experience that provides the most complete representation of the impact. I will end my time by sharing a quote from a participant who will graduate this fall and transition to UNC, or I'm sorry, graduate in May and then transition to UNC in the fall. She says, "Being a part of Ames to UNC has been invaluable to me. When I decided to return to school in twenty-eighteen, I had my mind set to transition to UNC after I graduated. Ames to UNC has been instrumental in fulfilling this goal of obtaining my bachelor's degree by helping me to connect with my peers who are also transitioning to UNC and then also connecting me to UNC learning and support resources. I am truly grateful to have had this opportunity to be a part of a transition program that cares about students and their success at both campuses." So, the Transition Center, our Ames to UNC team, that includes our colleagues here at Ames and at UNC, we, we offer our thanks for your ongoing support and cheerleading of this program out in the community and, and at the state level, so thank you. Questions?
Just looking at that, UNC shares the database on the denial letters?
Yes, it's a full partnership.
It sounds like you're ready to testify.
I am ready to testify.
Excellent.
So, what is the status of that bill? Is it still alive?
It's still under consideration.
I'm sorry?
It's in appropriations for funding, so it's, it's still under consideration. It was introduced in January, I think early February it was moved along, so we don't have an update quite yet.
Yeah, it's in appropriations, waiting for the long bill.
Wonderful job, folks.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your time. Fun to share some programs with you and keep you updated on our progress with the strategic plan.
Great report, thank you very, very much.
So, some, I know I'm the very end, very end, keep going, keep breathing, we're almost done. So, you'll have the meetings of note list in your board packet. There are a couple of things I would like to point out. One, two, three, fourth bullet down, the college-wide conversation day. I did bring, it's not really a program, but it's an itinerary for the day, and I'm going to pass it around because I know you folks were not able to join us, but if you were interested in keynotes and what the breakout sessions were, it's right there. And it was an outstanding day. The survey has come back and, and every, every year it comes back with, this was the best conversation day ever. And this year it came back with, this was the best conversation day ever, so we're taking that feedback and moving it forward. Dr. Angie Pacchoni, who's the, the executive director of the Colorado Department of Higher Education, was our keynote and also offered a couple breakout sessions, and she was extremely energetic, offered some wonderful tools and tidbits, not only for professional life but for our personal life as well, so it was very relevant. And in moving down, you had just asked about Senate Bill one-four-three, I also put in your packet, I think on the next page, basically a summary of SB one-four-three, just a general. This actually was put together by the four institutions, so Ames, UNC, Metro was interested in transition programs as well as Western, and so we all testified initially at the, the Senate Education Committee where that was moved forward to appropriations. Let's see, what else do I want to mention to you? I had mentioned a couple of times about a think tank that we were putting together, and we had a think tank full day in January and our second day in February where we had fifteen employees and six community and industry leaders come together to really vision and think and have a space to do that around a book called Exponential Technologies. And we pretty much used that the first day and then used all of our brainstorming information notes to continue that conversation into February. Very, very exciting, we did, that group did come up with two very large recommendations that the college will continue to talk about in hopes of maybe it might land on our next strategic plan to continue to unfold. And I'll just give you a little bit of what those two buckets were. And they were pretty much around what's happening not only now with regard to things like genome, autonomous vehicles, AI, Internet of Things, and at what point is the tipping point when those things just become exponential? Where, where it becomes our day-to-day life, not just, oh, cool to have, but our day-to-day life. And then what does that not only mean for our programs, what we offer to educate, but also our operations? So, the two buckets that we ended up with are very broad, but one of them really does look at our, our general education and our competency-based education. So, how do we not only deliver, but what are the competencies that we want all of our learners to have? What does that mean for general education? Is that we want to make sure we remain relevant and we, that we can move quickly. So, that's going to be a continued conversation that we're going to be having. And then the other bucket that's pretty interesting is an innovation center internally for our faculty, for our staff and administrators, employees. Then that also kind of spurred another conversation, well, what about our students? How can the students use it? How can the faculty use it with their students? How can, and then it's kind of moved a little bit beyond that too and said, well, what about our communities? How can our communities get involved? So, that one's a big, complex one, they're both very complex and large, but very exciting. And so, we will continue to have these conversations college-wide, lots of research, lots of things to do with regard to that. This is not to be added on to everything we're doing now, but to continue conversations about how we can evolve into something like this in the mid, mid-future, a couple of years from now, so. Very, very exciting stuff. With that, you may recall that Ames belongs to a national organization called the Alliance for Innovation and Transformation. And they have a summer institute every year and we've been able to bring a team of folks usually for about a week in August. And we focus on a certain theme and we learn from learning partners that are outside of higher education, which is one of the benefits of belonging to this, is that while it's, while it's always beneficial to learn from our sister and brother institutions, it's also extremely valuable to learn from partners that are not higher ed at all. And so, this year it's being held in Denver and Ames has been asked to offer a breakout session on our think tank because one of their learning partners and their reading materials is exponential technologies. So, we will be working together with a group to put that together and present what we've done there, so that's quite exciting. And that's news to some folks here too because that just happened. I wanted to also mention, what else did I want to mention? Oh, I do remember last, I believe it was last month, I think, I told you that I was being considered for a national board seat for the National Association for Community College Entrepreneurship, which aligns really nicely with the Alliance for Innovation and Transformation I just mentioned. And also with these buckets that we just were talking about, it aligns very well with those. So, there's a, a letter in your packet that lets you know that I've been invited to join their board and so I have accepted. So, I wanted to let you know that as well. Are there any questions on the meetings of note that you want to hear more about that I did not cover? It's a long list.
I'd like to hear a little bit about your meeting with the Thompson School District Superintendent.
Yes, so, Dr. Schaefer and I met really, it was really a very open conversation and it was more continued about not only how can Ames assist Thompson more? And he gave us some very clear directions about that, which is fantastic, that have been passed along. But also on our strategic plan, there's an initiative there about investigating the, a mill levy. Right? So, that was really the conversation here. There was some very good advice that he offered for Ames with regard to considering going out for a mill levy and, and we'll take that to heart as we move forward. At this point, it sounds like really, while Ames has a very heartfelt and wonderful presence in Loveland and the Thompson Valley School District, we could do a lot more to be much more visible and, and prior to moving forward to asking for a mill levy.
We'd have to get some advocates up there.
And we would need to be a lot, we would need to be considering, jumping in a lot more with regard to things like concurrent enrollment and offering classes all over. So, so we have some work to do before we would even ask for a mill levy. Based on their experience and what they've been trying to do to get a mill levy for their own school district and for Loveland, so, not impossible, but probably not in the next few years. Yep.
But that's a little horse in the cart kind of.
Absolutely, right. So, it was a very good conversation, gave us some direction, and we'll be adding that to our pile and moving forward there.
That's good to have those discussions.
It's very good, and you know, that's, if you don't ask how It's very good, and you know, that's, if you don't ask, how you're ever going to know, right? So that was that meeting. Any other questions about other meetings that might be here?
Not I.
I will mention under the travel section, the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Conference has been canceled. It was their 100th anniversary, they did cancel it due to the COVID, so that, that's going to be coming off my travel list. And anything else?
Is that the one in June?
No, that's actually the one in two, two weeks.
The end of the month.
End of the month, yes, yep.
Okay.
And so we'll not be going, okay, so nothing else on the meetings? Okay, all right. Moving on to Employee Report, which is, I think, the last page in your packet. Are there supervisors here that have new employees they would like to introduce? And hold on one second, Michelle and...
Oh, all kinds of them.
Yeah, okay. You know what, let's, let's start from the back and move forward. So I can't quite see, but I see a beautiful blue shirt. You'll have to really shout out so we can hear you.
I'm Rhonda Johnson, Director of Networking and Telecom. This is my arena boss for working with kids on horses. This is Steve Smith. He has joined Ames Community College as our Network Administrator II on January 10th of this year. Before coming to Ames, Steve worked at Nutrien and UNC. Prior to working at UNC, Steve was an IT Systems Engineer for 16 years at Flat River Power Company. His responsibilities there included networking, IT security, server administration, storage, and VMware administration. Steve received both his undergraduate and graduate degrees from Davis University. He holds a bachelor's degree in computer networking and a master's in business administration.
I'm Tom Miller, I'm with Academic Advising. Please meet Olivia. Olivia Parks, emphasis on high school and concurrent enrollment. She has experience with Gear Up in the local high schools in Greeley and Weld County, so she brings that connection to our advising team. She's also manager at a local tea shop over there in Loveland area, lots of customer service experience as well. Olivia is new to us, and she has just jumped in, she's doing great.
I'm Sarah Winchell, I'm a Senior Pathway Advisor here. My titles are very long for the pathways I advise, I'm going to look at them from here. Education, hospitality, human services, technical sciences, skilled trades. So I have the unique position here to supervise Rick. Rick is our new Fort Lupton full-time advisor. While I'm on the Greeley campus, I get to supervise Rick for that reason. My pathway overseas welding, welding is very popular and important here on the Fort Lupton campus, so that's kind of my position. Rick comes to us from UNC, he's done a lot with the international program at UNC, he's done a lot of student services and has a lot of experience, he's doing great. He really fits in, he makes the dedicated commute from Greeley to Fort Lupton every day, and we're very excited to have him here.
I'm Kelly Jackson with the Foundation, and I would like to introduce Kate Hill. She comes to us directly from HR. Her valuable temp is hired, we'd like to steal her. Kate was raised in Brickstales, she's a local gal. She is an Ames alum, for our alumni incorporating business manager. We're super excited because she can speak their language. Not, not only was she an Ames student, but she continued on to CSU and then got her masters at Oral Roberts University. She worked with their alumni organization there, and so she's got some background with that. She's very good presentation and networking. She's already drowned in the last month. She's been out and about, we're on listening tours right now, connecting with various departments across the colleges, campuses, and we will be out in the community next with our corporate partners. So Kate has jumped in feet-first, roller skates a fire, and she's doing a fabulous job. We're excited to have someone in this permanent position because now I get to pass that to her. You'll see her present, our excellence at Ames, Alana.
Oh, super.
I am very pleased to announce that this is Eden Logue, and Grant Riefford, they both have accepted full-time IT support specialist positions within my department. For me, this is great bragging rights. Both of these started out as work-study employees, and Eden has graduated from Ames and has moved into the full-time position. Grant has a couple of classes left, and then he will graduate from Ames Community College. And so it's very exciting to see the students come in as a work-study program and be able to transition into full-time employment.
Last, not least, we have two new people in CCR. Brendan's been here for a little while, but she brought to my attention, she said, "You know, I never got introduced."
Well, shame on you, Timothy.
But Brendan is the staff exec, and is just an outstanding job. Tries to keep you out of trouble and tries to keep you pointed in the right direction, so grateful to have her on board, and she came to us from the police department, yeah. And so we've got, she's doing a great job, so very pleased to have her. Paige came to us, she was, she was a temp, she is the Director for Institutional Events and Sponsorships, and has just taken a hold of that and done an outstanding job. And I know we get a lot of reports, you people are not shy about sharing your, your thoughts and feelings, and you're not getting good reports back, so I appreciate that. And Paige has just hit the ground running, she was doing events before and, you know, large-scale size, and came here and just fit right in, and fantastic, so thank you. And she's a Greeley native.
And that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you very much. Okay, down to the wire here. I think 10 and 11, we might just combine those two comments from board members and then assessment of the board meeting, what we learned, what worked, what didn't, et cetera. So if we could combine those, I would entertain board comments. Who'd like to start?
I'll just quickly start. I'm, I'm, like I've said before with Dr. Weiskaver, I really like your, what you do. Yeah, it's near and dear to my heart, so I'm very impressed, and Ames T U N C is just amazing, and I could see why you would like to exploit it and promote it. So I appreciate all the dedication to everyone, and for the people that have been here since 1:30, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, I guess I, I sometimes feel like a broken record, but I'm just amazed, constantly amazed at how many programs that are going on on the Ames Community College campus to help students succeed. I just, it just seems to me like, by golly, when they get here, they, they're not going to fail. That's just, that's the bottom line, so just love what you're doing. I think everybody's doing a, a super job, and last comment, and again, I'm a broken record, but I sure like to see these people who are working at a four-year institution move up and come to Ames.
Touche.
Again, I want to thank everybody for listening through our dialogue, you know, you know, we don't get to do this like we did today, and I, I think that was healthy for our board, healthy for all of us, you know, to have conversation. I appreciate Dr. B's, she listened to me very well last Monday, this past Monday, and I think we, we kept that fluid conversation continuing, as well as my best friend Lyle here. You know, we are we, you know, and we are Ames, we're part of you, we're fabric, and I, I'm so excited about, you know, our stats, what we have to promote this community with, and, and engage our students and our adults and everybody that's involved with it, with our college. I'm very proud of you, you folks, and, you know, humble too, at the same time, because I learned so much, and I wish I had a full-time job to pay attention, but I don't. On a sidebar, since I, I brought this, and I'll share it to Dr. B, but a little bit, and I'm sure you're aware of this, Sarah, about the SNAP program, did you see the Denver Post, so it's old news?
The what, SNAP?
SNAP, it's, here, I'll read it, you can read it. It's, you know, it's, it's, you can't, well, you put your glasses on. But, you know, you know, food is very important for students, they need to eat, you know, and it's amazing how many are, are hungry, you know? If you read this article, it's, it's, it's saddening, but at the same time, we're all here to help, and I hope our pantry is doing well. If it's not, let me know. So it's, I think it's, it's something to be aware of, but thank you again for being here and doing what you do greatly every day.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll try to make this brief, but thank you for sitting through this today. This was the hard work. You know, when we get to policies that affect the board, you know, they're kind of like your policies, and you get to vet those at your cabinet meetings and stuff like that. Well, we don't have those, so we get to vet them here, but I, I think it's great that we vetted it in, in public. Everybody knows what's going on, that's how I like it. I, I value transparency incredibly, and I think this has been a very transparent meeting, and we, we got through it, we, we considered each other, I think we were respectful of one another, and as you see, sometimes we have different opinions and we work our way through those, and this is kind of how we do it. So in light of what worked and what didn't work, I thought that worked very well today. So, and certainly, what worked, what didn't work is communicating with you today, hearing about all the hard work you do, your commitment, the hard work with the coronavirus, and, and how we are going to prepare for those contingencies is just, again, absolutely amazing, and I can't say enough about how much we appreciate it. I did drop the puck at the Eagles game, and they won, so I've been waiting to get invited back, but I haven't heard back from them, so, but anyway, sorry, I missed the Greeley day at the Capitol, I was very ill, as were some others, so I just happened to be something running through the community or through Ames or something, but anyway. And then, again, the ACCT conference, I would encourage my colleagues to think about next year on that. Other than that, thank you very, very much. I'm going to adjourn the meeting here and quit talking. Have a great, great weekend.